All right. Good evening, everyone. How are we doing this fine evening? Beautiful weather for whoever managed to get outside. Gorgeous day today. So, and we're going to have a gorgeous meeting. Why not? Right? I mean, why not?
Speak it into existence.
That's right. Make it be. Make it be. Yep. All right. We've got a couple ticks here, Sue, or one tick. Nope, we don't at all. We're on. All right. I will call to order the City Council Work Session for March 1st, 2021. A roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor McBride.
Here.
Counselor Cofield.
Present and accounted for.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman. Counselor Martinez Plankarte.
Present.
Mayor Rogers. Counselor Bacon. Oh. Here. Thank you. Counselor Finley.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll leave Elise for now in case she comes a few minutes late. I didn't get a call or email from her.
No, I didn't hear anything either. Okay. Thank you. All right, folks, council agenda and meeting. Any comments on this evening's business session? Seeing none, we'll move on to council business items. Anything you'd like to bring up? Before tonight's meeting? All right. Seeing none. Again, we're on to item 5A, the YCAP Warming Shelter Update. So here we roll. I know there's, we've got Alexandra, I believe. And who else do we have? Mandy and Cara, I think. So take it away, folks. Whenever you're ready.
Can I just confirm, was Mandy and Cara on the line?
This is Mandy. I'm here.
Perfect.
Sarah is also trying to join at the moment. So I'm just, she asked for a link for the meeting.
Fantastic. Well, Mayor and council members, thank you so much for making space for us to come and share today. I brought this document to share with you really because I had the opportunity many months ago to come and share about our initial response to COVID-19 and some things that we were planning. And I really wanted you to have a quick update before we jump into a couple other topics on what some of those programs have looked like. Our regular programming has continued throughout this time. And then these, these statistics that I kind of want to share in programs, these numbers are reflective of through December 2020. And we do have some updated statistics that will be shared on some specific programs a little bit later. A lot of this, I should say, has done, been done with limited staffing at YCAP. So I really see us as kind of small but mighty, trying to lift these programs forward. We've been really fortunate to be connected to our statewide network, Community Action Partnership of Oregon, and get advice and support and resources from across the state and other like-minded agencies running similar programs. So we've been very fortunate. One of the programs we've talked frequently about and been able to provide updates to both Mayor Rogers and your city manager, Dan, as frequently as possible, has been the Motel Program. It is about two weeks until that program will have actually operated for one year. We never anticipated that to go beyond the three to six month mark, but we have had incredible community-wide support, including from the city of Newburgh and CARES dollars and the county to be able to expand that. And I will have some more statistics on that, but to date, 141, or through December, 141 persons have been served through that project. And 72% of those households through December were successful in transitioning to positive housing exits. We have learned that it has been a needed resource in the community, and we are in deep conversations with Providence and other Newburgh leadership with Project Turnkey, which you may be familiar with, is the grant available through Oregon Community Foundation to potentially make a program like this permanent. And we are looking specifically at Newburgh locations and Newburgh partnerships to bring that to Yamhill County. We are in early phases, so not a lot to announce at this point, but really looking at feasibility of bringing something more long-term to the community. Secondarily, our youth outreach program really buckled down to bring in additional federal care funds for our runaway and homeless youth programming, so expanding that. Additionally, working with the Community Wellness Collective to enhance mental health services during this time. It's been a fantastic partnership. They've actually entered our space, which many of you may be familiar with some of those updates, but it's, it's just continually grown and both Community Wellness Collective and our team at Youth Outreach has found it to be very positive and very sustainable at this point in time. We've also worked with the Newburgh School District to increase academic support from our Newburgh location. As of the end of December, we were looking at 502 hours of direct academic support provided to youth. I know that my last report was that it has well over 600 hours, so it just keeps building an interest and engagement. And we knew that that was a very significant need for families and youth who were not able to go to a classroom. You'll also see here, our food bank has distributed 2.65 million pounds of food. We did that with creating supplemental food boxes from donations and FEMA funding, some emergency funds that came through the Oregon Food Bank. That is about half a million, just over half a million additional pounds of food comparative to the last year. So our food bank again has been very mighty. I think we've only brought on one or two temp workers here in the warehouse to try and mobilize this. And I think they've done a phenomenal job in supporting our partner agencies across the county. Additionally, you'll see just in energy assistance alone, and specifically only COVID. So this is all in addition to our normal energy dollars that were going out the door was over $813,000 by the end of December. All of the funds that were distributed that were CARE dollars or CERF dollars, YCAP met the deadline of 12/31/2020 and did not have to return a single dollar. On the second slide, or second page of the document here, a major program for us has been rental relief. By the end of December, we were able to distribute over 1.7 million in rent relief to families across Yamhill County. Since January, this, the Housing Stabilization Team has already moved an additional 200,000, and they are just opening a program that's going to deliver an additional 800,000 in rental relief by the end of June. We have also been preparing for the federal package of emergency rental assistance that we've been anticipating coming. And we're just waiting on a few final details from Oregon Housing Community Services. However, we do know that YCAP and Community Action Agencies across the state will take the lead on that. What that looks like is we've prepared for it, and those funds will hopefully become available in the next 30 to 60 days. That will be in the ballpark of 4.4 million in rental relief that we hope to use to stabilize homes and make households whole as COVID and its effects continue in 2021. I did invite Mandy Goff here. She is our Housing Stabilization Director. Her team is the primary team that has worked over all of our rental relief programs, the Motel Program, and every homeless prevention program. And so I would love to turn it over to her so she can share a little more about updated statistics on a few of these, as well as information about some of our shelter initiatives and partnerships.
Thanks, Alexandra. So I'm Mandy Goff. I'm the Housing Director. Alexandra covered the rent relief program really well. Just a couple notes on that. So our main goal with that program was to really just stop a surge of households from becoming homeless due to the impacts of COVID-19. So you can see on the stat sheet, we helped households with an average of 3.5 months. And that included arrears and going forward when it made sense. In 2020, we did help many households with up to six months of rental assistance when they had no way to pay ongoing. And we did a lot of education around the eviction moratorium and what that meant as it came and went several different times. And we're also going to be really focused on the new deadline for the eviction moratorium and making sure households are made whole as much as possible as we come close to that. The other piece that didn't get into the statistics, but I think is important to mention, that's Newburgh-focused, is when COVID hit, we did have the opportunity to add a second street outreach worker, which was really, really critical, we found, as doors were closing to many agencies to be physically in person. So we were able to divide the geography of Yamhill County, which is quite large for one outreach worker, so that we could have a Newburgh-based dedicated outreach worker, whose name is Sean. And so they have been really critical in engaging people who are living outside, who wouldn't seek us out, who may not come to a shelter. And they're really acting as the pipeline to get those folks into the Motel Shelter Project, into our housing projects, projects with basic needs and connected to local shelters, too. And just a word on that, we, we also did apply in the midst of 2020 and were accepted into the Built for Zero Initiative, which is a national program that provides intensive coaching to communities around the US to end chronic homelessness and veteran homelessness. So we are actively working with them, and our street outreach workers are a big part of that. And we should have soon, in the next few months, some, some dashboards to share with you all and, and throughout Yamhill County on the shifts that we're making and the numbers we're facing around chronic homelessness and veteran homelessness locally. Because we know, you know, it takes more than just these programs. It takes system-level strategic action. And so I just like to make folks aware that that is also that thinking is going on in the background. And then the final, the final piece I wanted to share is that we did increase shelter in several significant ways in 2020. One of them, as Alexandra mentioned, is with the Motel Shelter Project. We have some updated stats beyond this that are updated as of today, March 1st, that we'll email out after this. But as of today, we have 171 persons in that project. We do have McMinnville and Newburgh-based motel partners that we're working with. And just so folks are aware, it's, it's not just a motel stay. We also couple every person that is placed in that project with some pretty intensive rapid rehousing services, which includes a dedicated case manager, work with a housing specialist who does landlord advocacy, applies them for apartments, that sort of work, financial assistance, and then other supportive programs such as RentWell, which is a tenant education program. We are actually doing a session of RentWell. It's a six-week program virtually now, and several of our Newburgh-based motel shelter folks are participating in that. And that's really dedicated to folks who have past evictions, criminal history, or other items, which is making them really hard to, to house at this time. We also partnered with the Bob, Providence Bob Team, with some out-of-the-cold funds that came down through the state, and we have been passing through funding for them to provide for dedicated motel beds and case management specifically to persons of color as the priority group. And we also worked with Oregon Health Authority and their equity grant to build out additional motel beds in Newburgh and McMinnville for persons of color throughout COVID-19. Let's see. Lastly, we initiated a partnership with Newburgh Emergency Shelter under the Community Wellness Collective to bring a different model of sheltering to our Newburgh facility. That facility, YCAP's Newburgh Shelter, has operated as more of a long-term facility since the early 1990s. So families typically stay three to six months, months with us. So there's kind of a waiting list process. It's highly independent. Folks have their own key, come and go. And as we were tracking the data of the needs within Newburgh, we really found that an emergency shelter model was needed within the city and that that was a growing need. And so it sparked some conversations with the Newburgh Emergency Shelter, Cara and Sarah, who we had been talking with. We knew they did really excellent work. And one of our focuses was to build out the spectrum of what sheltering looks like in Yamhill County in Newburgh, and to build the capacity of our partners to, to come alongside us and, and participate more in that work. And so in early 2021, we did officially sign a lease with them to lease our Newburgh facility at no cost to the Newburgh Emergency Shelter. So in this arrangement, we also continue to provide the utilities, maintenance, and funding for one FTE shelter support staff as they move from the inclement weather model to a night-by-night shelter. And so we're really excited to be partnering with them. And and we're looking forward to doing that more. And so I know Cara and Sarah, I believe, are on the line, so they can hopefully share, share more about how the sheltering is going, what kind of clients they've been seeing, and successes they've seen. Thank you.
Hi, this is Sarah, and I'm ready to share if folks are ready. So a little bit of background on the emergency shelter. About a year and a half ago now, Cara and I had been kind of looking around on the community groups and trying to find out what had happened to the emergency shelter when it was housed at Zion that Denise Bacon had facilitated. But it had been a couple of years, unfortunately, since it had opened. And so Cara and I kind of independently had been looking for that resource to kind of start back up again. And so we met with Mandy and some folks from Love Inc. and the Zion Church and some other folks and, and found out that it was plausible to open back up. And it was a good thing we met and did that when we did, because like the very next week in October, it froze and we were packed full. So we've gone from that model to, very recently, at the end of January, to the new location. We had a sort of soft opening to, to get everything settled there at the the House on College. And it has been amazing. We've you know, come up with some, some barriers, but overall, we've been open almost 40 days now at this point. We did have to shut down for a few because of COVID, but we have been able to, in, in that little over a month, serve over 23 unique individuals that otherwise would have been out on the street. And over that time, some of the things that we've been able to help folks with are consistent medical care with getting COVID vaccinations, COVID testing, that would be really hard to coordinate for them. Also, we have folks that are in a, a place where they're taking on addiction and in a, in a place that, you know, their basic needs are being met. And so now they're being able to address some of those issues in their life. We have folks gaining weight because they're getting consistent meals and a bed to sleep in versus inconsistent nights on cots. And just overall, I feel like we've been able to provide a much more human experience for folks. And, and already their perspectives and demeanor have changed considerably. And so it, it's, it's really been phenomenal. Our, our big challenge has been volunteers. You know, there's still a lot of folks afraid, rightfully so, of COVID, or they haven't been vaccinated yet, or they've been vaccinated once. So we're still struggling with that volunteer piece and building a consistent schedule, but I feel like, you know, we're just barely over the 30 days out, and those things will come.
All right. It looks like Cara's on the line as well. Cara, did you want to add anything?
Um, you know, I think Sarah pretty much covered it all. It's just, it's been a great opportunity for our guests and to get them, you know, back into society and be able to have a good night's sleep and then be functional humans the next day and go out and find jobs. And Sarah and I, you know, when we started this, we didn't want people to stay there forever. It's more of kind of get them back on their feet. And we help people look for jobs and apply for them and direct them to resources around town. So I think this, this new model of the nightly shelter has definitely helped people, you know, just kind of go on further and, and, you know, be better at, at being humans.
I think the, the thing that I really left out was Zion was such a great resource, short-term housing for folks, but we now can wash clothes. We have a kitchen. We have showers in the house. So, you know, folks are able to leave out the door in the morning, showered with fresh clothes. And as Cara explained, we've been sitting down and helping folks apply for jobs online, which is a, a resource with the library closed. I know the drop-in center tries real hard to let folks have access to the internet. But that's something that we're able to provide that as far as long-term assistance for these folks is, is putting them in a different position moving forward.
Well, I just got to say that all of you mentioning folks that are staying at a shelter, considering them guests, is a tremendously humanizing thing. So that alone, I just, big, big applause for y'all for that approach. And Alexandra and Mandy, Sarah, Cara, thank you for all you do. I'll turn it over to questions now, folks. If you have questions to ask or comments, raise your hand so I can see. You got that little raise hand feature. There, Bryce.
Yeah, echo Rick's comments. Thank you for, yeah, incredible work. There's so much, so many questions, so many good things. First question, um, I think Sarah, you had mentioned, you paused. I remember you pausing when you were talking about barriers. You talked about what's been going on and coming up against some barriers. Would you mind elaborating a bit on what some of the barriers are? You spoke to, like volunteers being one?
Our, our biggest barrier is that we did have a COVID outbreak. Unfortunately, I became a part of that. So we did have, we did have a, a time where several of us were sheltered in place there, are quarantined in place. And then we had to wait for a commercial cleaner to come in and, and kind of scrub the house. And we were able to do that because when we transitioned, something I left out, I'm sorry. We were able to make that transition from kind of like the drop-in shelter model. We paired with the Community Wellness Collective. And so it, it gave us the foundational and kind of business side of the nonprofit that we didn't have. Cara and I operated completely on a cash donation basis. We didn't have a bank account. We didn't have any sort of stockpile of anything other than just what we had on hand and could keep in a closet at the church. So the Wellness Collective gave us that kind of additional support to make it a more sustainable business model. Unfortunately, like businesses, I know is a yucky word to put into this, but that, you know, bureaucracy, red tape portion. But they've been a big help. And so the barriers, yes, COVID. To, you know, we, it's, it's, it expanded the resource. And so we have new folks coming that we've never met before. And we have people who have spent 20 years of their life on the streets in either Newburgh or Yamhill, you know, Yamhill County at large, in their family. And, you know, sometimes families don't get along. So we, we have, you know, some behavioral stuff that we're working out, trying to figure out a process for if, if folks, if we have to call law enforcement, getting mental health services for folks. When we only opened up a couple of days in the winter, you know, at a time for the snow, that wasn't a service that we were prepared to provide. But again, with that pairing, that partnership with Community Wellness Collective and the focus on holistic process through this and really getting folks care, we now have that barrier of like good barrier that, you know, we're making those connections, but sometimes they're not fast enough.
Yeah.
Right. And so we're open in the middle of the night when no one else is, you know, like, who do you call at 2:00 AM? And, and then the volunteer piece is really a challenge, getting folks that are consistent. We're a house setting, but we're working on some kind of marketing materials, recruitment materials, so that folks know that, you know, it's not what people see on the, the news. It's not what, what they see even about Portland. I mean, we're in, in a 100-year-old house off college, you know, that like, looks like it's one of the George Fox houses, you know, it's, it's not what people think. And so we're still getting over that stereotype and barrier.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
I want to give space for some of my fellow counselors, ask other questions. So I'll just say, surely, I'd be, you know, curious to look at that of how many folks experiencing houselessness we, we have in Newburgh. And Sarah, work with you. I feel like we run in similar circles to figure out, like, really, what, how could we dream of what Newburgh would look like if we were able to help house people well? So we don't, you know, require anyone to be on the streets. Like, that's a, I think, an incredible dream to think about together. Because I would love it. I would love to be the, right, that city where we could say, like, if you're experiencing houselessness, like, we will help care for you. Right? And so, yeah, I would love to hear more about what that might look like and what resources required to help overcome some of the barriers and to address the cultural stigma, right, that surrounds these, these communities? Because it sounds like that's significant as well. Thank you for your service to our community. It's incredible. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. This is amazing, and I'm so excited for this. And I think this sort of model is really important, especially for a town like Newburgh. And I also just wanted to call attention, I do, I think that also there are some local restaurants and businesses that have been providing meals. And it's been really amazing to watch and see people stepping up in that regard. And so I just wanted to, if you could maybe give a shout out to some of those businesses that have really stepped up and started to feed and care for people that are experiencing houselessness, I would love to hear who those people are.
Cara, do you want to take that one, or do you want me to?
You go ahead. I mean.
Well, the other thing is no pressure. The other thing, you could, you could send it to us, because I think that would be something worthwhile to get out on our website. So no pressure. But if you got them right there, that's great. But otherwise, it'd be good to get that out.
Yeah, no worries. I've got a couple just off the top of my head. Honestly, I am recovering still from kind of these long-term COVID effects. So it takes me a minute to, to remember things. But, um, you know, Coffee Cat, right off the top of my head, really sticks out, because Tiffany over at Coffee Cat has just supported us since the day we opened our doors at Zion. And so she has provided, not just like cast-out food, that's another important thing to remember about all of these, these folks that have helped us, is they bring like top-notch quality, you know, like first, not second qualities. It's always really great, amazing food. So Tiffany at Coffee Cat, the folks at Recipe, we've had folks from Round Table donate. Last year, Caravan Coffee donated a freezer full of coffee for us. So our, our guests have been able to, you know, have some awesome coffee. And then it sounds like we've got Gem 100 and Honey Pie Pizza on deck to start filling in certain days of the week. So these aren't just like one-offs from these folks, these, these organizations. They're actually dedicating certain days of the week, you know, every week or every other week, which really helps us free up our, our volunteers and managers to be able to work on that social piece with our guests, because you know, that's, that's sort of the first step in getting services for a lot of these folks is just like sitting down and processing with them everything that they need and where they're at. Because a lot of folks are so socially isolated. So it, it sounds like a simple thing, but to feed folks good food, quality food, and then being able to free up our volunteers to, to do the bigger work that needs to happen instead of just preparing meals is really important.
Great. Well, thank you. Other comments or questions, folks? Not seeing any yellow hands. I've got just one other thing. I didn't mention this earlier. Big thank yous to Counselor Bacon for all her work with Zion and to Counselor Yarnell Holloman for all of her work with the Wellness Collective. And thank you all. I mean, you all, the work you all do, and I know just at one point in my past life, I, I did some of this stuff, and it ain't easy. I can just safely say that. So thank you. The only other thing that I would, might, might be interested in, and I think, Alexandra, you mentioned that you had something like 62% positive outcomes from the motelling program. I, I would, if I got that, did I get that right, that figure? I hope.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
Thanks, Mandy.
Yep, 75. That's, okay, first off, that's incredible. To go to positive housing outcomes, that's unbelievable. I'd be really fascinated to know what the, what, what they went into, what the, what, I'm not for now, but at some point, if you have a chance, I'd just be real interested in, in knowing, right, what, where, what the outcomes were for folks.
Yeah. And, and we've been emailing some of that broadly.
Yeah. And, and we've been emailing some of that broadly. Over to Dan when we're able to, and I know Mandy prepared some of that information. So I'm not sure if she wants to share now or just we'll email it to. The council after this, and then we can certainly share more if there's an interest.
I'm sorry. Can I jump in and just add to that for a second? So one of the things that, that I think we have done right, all of us in, in this conversation. Over the past 12 months, especially with COVID, is that. We're all approaching this in slightly different ways, rather than just a one size fits all approach. And so I think, you know, we're all coming in contact in different ways with these folks. And, and we're recognizing that it's not that one size fits all. And I think that, you know, Bryce, to go back to your. Your point about like being a town with zero homelessness, like. You know, and, and Kara knows and, and the folks that work with me and, and that's what makes Kara and I work well as a team is like, we have this. Approach of like showing everybody in Newburgh that they're loved. And if anybody can do it, like we're the town. And so. This kind of multifaceted approach and, and figuring out all these different things. So that folks can get long-term care and be in a sustainable. Place long-term has, I, I don't think it's. I don't think it's like a, a dream. I think it can happen. So thank you all.
Just to add. To your comment or question, about 90% of the folks that went to positive housing locations went to their own apartments. On some sort of housing program, either internal to YCAP or the Housing Authority. So we connected a lot of folks with housing vouchers and then provided the deposit on my cap site and the housing search and advocacy. And then the rest were either able to self-house through their own income, rejoin family or natural supports or a couple we did get into. Substance use treatment or adult foster home, long-term care assisted living facilities. For some of our folks that needed that level of care. And then just to go back to the question about the numbers with the Built for Zero initiative. That is the goal is, is first you got to find out how, how many folks you have that are experiencing homelessness in your community. And then beyond that chronic homelessness, veteran homelessness, family homelessness. And so. Within the next 30 days, we should have those baseline numbers to share with our, our community. And then we update those numbers monthly to hopefully show shifts towards getting towards functional zero. So yeah, we should be able to, to provide those soon to, to Newburgh. We are breaking it out by zip code. And providing a lot of different data points on there besides just the number, how long folks have been homeless. How many days it takes us from when we identify them to when we house them. And so we can hopefully reduce that time over as we get better and better.
Awesome. Denise.
Was thinking about whether I should speak or not because I broke my toe and I already cry a lot and I. I'm an emotional person anyway, but I really, Sarah and Kara know how much. I so appreciate, it broke my heart when I had to give up the shelter. And I felt guilty for all those years. So to have it. Have it come back and be way more than I ever could have dreamed it could be. Just means so much to me and you know, I hope you both know, and I know I've told you both. How much I love and appreciate the work that y'all have put into it. And I got through it without tears. Cause I'm not good at that. I cry all the time.
Right, Bryce, did you have a comment?
Denise, uh, put in the comment, at least in spaces I'm in, your tears will always be welcome. So please.
My friends tell me it's my superpower, but I'm a little over emotional today because of my pain.
Bring all the emotions, all, all the emotions to be emotional, to be human. So thank you Denise for your, your emotions and for your work in doing this. So good. And maybe this is getting too far ahead or too much in the details. Dan's probably going to be like. We'll handle it later. I'm curious, you know, to, as we slowly but surely head into. The sort of like financial and budgeting and all that sort of fun season. Would be curious to hear more about, again, if you could dream into what you're doing and how you might scale it, expand it or deepen it. What would be necessary to do that? Cause I've heard nothing but incredible. Things from fellow counselors and I've seen lots of head nods and snaps. And I think, you know, we're on board with wanting to be a community that does this well. So if you have, again, like ideas of what can be done with increased financial resources. I know I would be interested in seeing that. So is it taken into consideration as we move into this next season? If, if that makes sense. Mandy, I love data. So yes, what you're getting and like as it's disaggregated by like. Family and veteran status and whatnot. I would love that data. Dan, I don't know who the main contact person is in the city. I should know this. I don't know this. To get that data, but I'd be interested in working with that person. Cause this, yeah, if we can't care for our folks that experiencing a houselessness, like we gotta do something better. So, yeah, absolutely. Send some things. We know how much financial resources to be thinking about. And send the data. I love it.
Can I jump in real quick? Cause I have a, a couple of responses back for that. And sorry, I'm taking up so much space, but. My COVID brain is working right now. So. One of the things with the, the Dream It. That has been just amazing with our pairing with the Community Wellness Collective has been that. You know, working with Elise and Kristen on that, in this collaboration, like it's such a collaborative organization to begin with. And then for Kara and I to step in, it's just like blown up. And so, you know, we're already looking at outside grants and fundraising and, and doing more and going big. The house, Bryce, I would love to have you over to the house and like see. What, because it is a beautiful house and, and people feel like they're family there. And, and that's not just like. You know, the bones of the house, but it's also like the people that we are, you know, inviting to come in and be a part of it. But, but we're constantly outreach, doing outreach to the local faith-based organizations. Providence, other places. We, we've got hustle and we're making it happen. But also we do need some, some collaborative. Community collaboration, like background checks, like that's something that we're still trying to kind of figure out. If that. Over at Love Inc. used to cover our background checks when we were just like the weather. Shelter, but you know, we're looking at figuring out a way to partner with somebody to kind of help with that. But definitely the Wellness Collective and, and like expanding that. Expanding what we're able to do with the shelter is something that we're, we're looking at because I think. Being a. A touch point for people and having services come into us to meet with. People that are experiencing mental health issues, addiction issues in a place that feels like home to them. Versus making them get on a bus and spend four hours a day going to Mac or, you know, somewhere else. I know that Mandy, we had talked about it in the early, you know, phases of this, like this can be. A game changer for us out in Newburgh because just the distance with the services is such a barrier for folks. And, and again, that, that comfort level that, you know, people feel like this is home to them. And so their level of receptive receptiveness. To, to receiving services and, and asking for help changes. So. Yeah, I'm excited. I would love for you, for the council as a whole to come out and, you know, socially distance and see the place. Cause it's amazing.
Absolutely. I'll go. I'm gonna bring all my fellow homie counselors. We're gonna go to, Rick, you coming? Dan, you're coming? Everybody, we're all going. Mark it on the calendar.
Sarah, that would be great. I think it'd be awesome. I think it'd be, it'd be a fun little excursion for us all. The other thing is if, if you want to send me some, some, oh, I don't know, information on what you need in terms of background checks, I'll, I'll give it some thought. I don't know if Habitat's got the capacity, but I'll, I'll see. Then of course, always when we talk about the subject, I can't leave well enough alone. I gotta say, it is still my dream that one of these days, one of the folks that first off are living in those turtle dove shelter on the street. Then they're going to go to Harvest House. From Harvest House, they're going to go to a white cup apartment. And from there, they're going to buy their own house through Habitat. I say it every time. I'll say it again. That's the dream. So there we go. Right on. All right. Otherwise, you guys are wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time this evening. And have a good evening and we'll, we'll talk again soon. All right, moving along, I think to item five B. This would bring us to Project Oasis, the feasibility study results. And I think we've got a couple of folks. On the line for this one. Tim, I think we've got Tim Murphy and John Spencer. Karina, good evening. Good evening. And Shannon, are you leading us off on this?
And thank you, Mayor. Good evening to City Council and Mayor Rogers. This is an information only presentation to follow up on an October 19th, 2020 city council decision. To allocate $115,785 of CARES Act funding. Toward two feasibility studies to see if we could center development of a childcare center in Newburgh. As a workforce development solution within a private public partnership, starting with DCI. And the Spencer Family Foundation. You can see a summary of. The findings in the RCA, but we do have guests. So joining us, we have Karina Ruiz, the principal architect and owner of Brick Architecture. Who completed the feasibility studies on both sites, 1150 Industrial Parkway and 305 Spring Brook Road. Yes, of John Spencer, owner and co-founder of both the Spencer Family Foundation and DCI, not in that order, DCI came first. And then Tim Murphy, who is the Vice President of Operations at DCI. But is also the Project Oasis Project Coordinator on behalf of DCI and the Spencer Family Foundation. So Karina is going to summarize the results of the feasibility study and then John and Tim will. Kindly explain their interpretation of the data and what their decision was. Thank you.
You Shannon. Well, well, thank you all for having us tonight. Yes, it was, it's our pleasure to present this to you. We did complete the feasibility study for both the 1150 Industrial Parkway and the 305 Spring Brook Road. Properties, as you may or may not recall. The goal was to look at the potential inclusion of a, a development, child development center. A daycare as a component of. The, in the 1150 building, an existing fitness center that was being renovated for that purpose. And then in 305 Spring Brook Road, that's actually DCI's headquarters. And so trying to look at taking a portion of that building. To meet what we're calling kind of the phase one need, which is the original daycare need to house not only. Daycare spots for DCI's employees, their Newburgh and Dundee employees, but then also for the community at large. And so. We completed both of those feasibility studies, analyzed the existing structures. And looked at how the program would work in both facilities. And then prepared cost analyses or had worked with DCI. And a local contracting partner to develop cost analyses for both the construction costs. And then also had pre-application meetings with the city of Newburgh and your incredible staff to. Start to look at what are the jurisdictional requirements as well as any. Potential cost implications for developing, developing both projects. And so we provided all of that analysis to, to DCI and the Spencer Family Foundation. And reached the conclusion in both cases that. It did not make sense to move forward with phase one of both projects or of, of the project in either location. And with that, I will transfer it over to Tim and to John to have them explain a little bit more around their perspectives on this.
Thanks, Katrina. Well, it's nice to be here and I appreciate the invitation to get the opportunity to share some of our thinking in this project with you. First, I want to thank you for the, for the. The money that was put up to help this thing get started. I, it, it's been incredible and I don't know where we would have been without that. It just kind of gave us a, a head start. And so it's extremely helpful. So we, we started with the industrial parkway and we, we. Everybody spent a lot of time on it and it just finally got too expensive. And so we, we thought, well, maybe DCI would be. Vacating the about 8,000 square feet where our, our accounting and customer services. We thought, well, it's, wouldn't be fun, but we, we contemplated moving that to another building and freeing it up for this project. So we started with that. And it, you know, the bottom line, we were pretty naive when this started. We didn't understand. The, the SDCs and, and things like that. So this project. When Katrina got done with it, we ended up with about $800,000 in cost to start this. Daycare center, the daycare portion of it. And the SDCs were about 20, 30 cent of that. And again, it was just us being naive and not understanding it. So. And so we, it just, what happened is I asked the, the lady that started Little Bird. In one of our last meetings, I said, what, she just started something in Lafayette. And she started a whole daycare for about 80 or $90,000. So talking about 800,000. Just seemed a little over the top. And. So we. We, we kind of gave up on, on that idea because of the cost. And I want to say that Doug and, and his team was extremely helpful in this. They were, they always had answers for us and we didn't really have to wait very long to get that, to get his help. So that meant a lot. So where we ended up is deciding, you know, what we want to do and. I should back up just a little bit. When we started, we just wanted to do a daycare center. And then. Shannon and Abashaw took it or suggested that we go to Gladstone to see a community center. That had been put together there in an old grocery, a large grocery store. And it was just an amazing facility. They had, they had daycare, they had pre-K, they had medical, dental. They had, they were talking earlier about how far people had to go. One of our visions for this is to have an office. That where people could and have a representative from the government in Yam Hill, the county. So that people wouldn't have to go to McMinnville every time they needed something. So there were a lot of things that we would like to do. I, Rick went out and visited Gladstone, which I really appreciated. His time to do that. So now that was our vision and it is still our vision. We plan to do that. And we're, it's a, this facility is about 30,000 square feet and we have our accounting. Manufacturing and a sem, a portion of our assembly. I think we have five buildings in Newburgh now. We're running out of places to go, but anyway, we. In order to make this into a community center, we would have to vacate all of that. And that's going to take more time. The project that the. At the mill site is something that we're looking at and we hope to be able to, you know, we've been in Newburgh almost 40 years. That's where we started this business. Our kids went to school there and we've been in this community a long time and it's our, our first choice. Always is to stay here and make this work. And we're really anxious to ultimately build this. Community center. So we're right now looking at the future where we can move totally out of that building. And then it will be a much larger project. And so that's our ultimate goal. And we will make this happen. In the meantime, after we got the feasibility studies done. We are in talks with the school district to consider doing something with them. To start the daycare center, a daycare center. With them. And we believe that this is doable at early. It looks good and we just, we, we've got to run that to ground. But I, I just, I, I, I hope that you can. You can understand that the, the passion that our family has to do this. We've got, we believe a beautiful piece of property at 305 North Spring Brook. It's a. It's a beautiful lawn. There's, we have six. It's a, it's a beautiful lawn. There's, we have six acres there. And there's so many things we could do with that. And our family's vision is that we make it into a community center. So that's kind of where we are. I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I just want to say thank you again for your help in this project.
Well, thank you. Comments or questions, folks? Looking for yellow hands? All right. Well, you know, I'll start. John, Tim and Karina. Again, you know, just thank you for even giving this a thought, honestly, you know, and chasing it down, as you said. You know, you're mentioning, you know, John being anywhere but Newburgh makes me very nervous. So I'm glad to hear that you have committed and you will be here. And we're looking at the mill property as well. But just thank you again. Thank you for looking into this. And hopefully this will work out with the school district and, you know, we'll go from there.
Ultimately, something will happen here. Yeah.
I just, I don't have a question as much as a statement. I think to say this is disappointing is the understatement of the year. And coming out of 2020, that's a big deal. You know, I'm glad that you all sat through the presentation that was before you because I can't imagine what $115,000 in their hands could have done. So, you know, I think my expectation is that you will work hard to make sure this happens in Newburgh and that we hold you to that expectation because it's pretty frustrating coming out of the conversation that we had the last time about whether or not we were going to put this money in your hands. And it was a pretty controversial topic and we weren't all in agreement on it. It's really hard to see this comeback as a, we just can't do it kind of thing. And so I really do expect that we will see something again from, from, from this group and that it should be in Newburgh.
Yeah, it will, it will be in Newburgh and we'll spend whatever, if we do something with the school, it's going to be in the neighborhood of at least another $300,000. So it will be, that money is, I believe, in the future, you will feel that it was extremely well spent.
Mike?
Yes, I'm just trying to understand, this is going to be a, you're wanting to do a community, community center slash daycare center, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I like the idea of a community center, but on the daycare side, would you not be duplicating your efforts there because there's already several others in the area unless you're going to be doing something different than what I understand?
Yeah, Tim, why don't you?
Yeah, absolutely. So to get a direct quote from, from Jennifer Richter, head of the Early Learning Program Manager for Yam Hill CCC. Even before COVID-19 arrived on the scene in Yam Hill County, was considered a childcare desert. According to a 2019 study out of OSU, only 16% of our children's 0 to 5 had a, had access to a regulated childcare slot. Now, over 4,000 children from kindergarten through fifth grade are also in need of care with our school, with our schools being engaged in distance learning. So this is what inspired the movement was the knowledge that what started out as a workforce development program specifically for DCI, we were informed that the state at large and our county as well, what was, this was a large pain point and so much as so to be called this childcare desert. And there were, I believe, the Ford Foundation just wrote an article about a month or eight, six weeks ago on the topic. And the fact is, is the need is great. There are, and those resources that are out there, there are not enough slots for the amount of children in need. And the other aspect of what we're trying to do is to create, you know, affordable childcare for, you know, if you were to walk the halls of DCI, what represents to be the, you know, the type of people that are our, our family, right? The wage working people who are trying to get to work to find a solution, to have a safe place for their kids to go. And also co-mingle with all variations of class. I mean, there's going to be, it would serve the haves and the have-nots. But we would ensure that those that are struggling to find affordable, safe care could in fact have that through our program.
All right, Denise?
Well, you know, Tim and John, how much I love your project. I, you have seen me cry when we talked about it. I just want to remind the council that the reason this is happening has to do with our SDC funds or fees. So when that comes up next month or so, that we really need to, to look at that. You know, where it makes sense to spend money when you're pulling off a project like this is, is not there. So hopefully, when that comes forward, we'll be able to do better and make it even more possible for when you are ready, Tim and John, to build it. So I look forward to working with you in, wearing all my hats to make sure this gets done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, John, can I just clarify? Did you say 20 to 30% of the 800,000 was going to be SDCs?
27 to 32% were SDCs and lighting requirement.
Lighting, okay. All right. Well, as you know, as Denise said, there's been instances in the past where I, I'm not sure we had the mechanisms to, to support because of SDCs, but we'll, we'll be diving deeper into that here in the not-too-distant future. So anything else, folks? Any other comments or questions? Bryce?
Yeah, thank you for, for the work that's gone in, Karina. Thank you for your time and all this. Thank you for asking the clarification, Rick, about the percentage. So I have 27 to 32. Is it possible to get, or you might even have it on hand, the sort of breaking out, what is SDC and what is, is lighting? I'm not particularly familiar with development. So in my mind, I'm like, lighting's probably expensive, but I don't know how expensive or what percentage of the 27 goes to lighting as opposed to SDCs. But that would be helpful because I don't know how much control we would have over lighting, SDC.
I think there were within SDCs total 183,000. And then we have a $40,000 estimate for, for lighting with the understanding that the true number of that lighting would be recognized after an actual light study. Doug and his team, along with some others, had, from PGE and ODOT, had a great community support to try and understand what the lighting requirements would be. What ultimately came out of that is the efforts of PGE could assist by just putting some lights on a pole. But based on the traffic study, it was AKS, was, was that they felt that the yardage of the light poles in the distance, that the solution that PGE came up with wouldn't be able to illuminate both sides of the street. And therefore, we would have to probably put light poles on the other side of the street. So not fully recognized on that, but at the end of the day, it's 183 plus the 40 gets you to, just to
23.
23 divided by the 800.
Are those numbers in the study?
They are.
Okay.
I don't know if everyone wants to get into the whole study, but the study can be sent upon request to whoever.
For sure. No, I would definitely love to see it. I was just double checking my packet because I don't think, unless I'm like really missing something, I don't think the site is in our package. Yeah, would, would love to see the study, you know, especially in greater details. As, you know, Denise talked about, we get into SDCs, which I think Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, is that April is when we get into SDC stuff?
April 19th, yeah.
Cool. So yeah, that would be definitely helpful. My second question, I believe in the initial proposal in October, you talked about going to both state and county, trying to ask for, you know, sort of like funds and whatnot. And I know there was like a sort of domino effect. So if I'm understanding correctly, because of this feasibility study showing that right now, effectively it's not feasible, does that mean then that the next sort of dominos around county and state funding didn't fall or aren't able to fall?
No, what we plant, what right now as we're in the, when we're
Sorry, you might be
the, what the initial numbers look like is that we can, we can have, how many, 26? We're going to be able to, we'll have 66 kids and a large number of those will be, we will use this extra money to make the daycare as inexpensive as we can. They get some money from the state and then we're hoping to pay all that extra so they don't have any money out of their pockets. It's just, life is very difficult for these families when they can't get daycare. Or either they can't find it or they can't get it. Because we've had some great employees that have just, you know, said, look, we just can't come to work anymore. And I know that the, it's, the need is out there and that's why we're committed to doing something.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I 100% agree. There's a definite need, you know, someone with a little one who is in daycare. I spent over $1,000 a month. And that's like, like right there in the median. And, you know, it's, it's hard. So yes, I affirm everything you're saying about the need. I appreciate, yeah, the work that you're doing.
All right.
So I'm going to clarify if I may.
Yeah, please.
So regarding the SDCs, I know it's a hot, a hot button. It's in this particular instance, because it just happened to be that the phase one, to answer the here and now of the childcare need in that 8,000 square foot interior remodel, it just so happened that the proportion of external charges that were not going to directly affect a family didn't make sense proportionality wise. When we think about how we can spend the resources, not only, you know, your dollars, the county's dollars, the state dollars, the, the the family's dollar, you know, how is the best and smartest way to spend those dollars? And it doesn't proportionally, it'll make a lot more sense in the, in the full build out of the full community center. Sorry, sorry. Do you guys understand that? Or did I, was I clear?
Yeah, I think so. Yep. All right. Anything else, folks? All right. Well, thank you all very much.
I have one last clarifying. I'm also processing your last answer, Tim. If I understood correctly, the, the state funds are going to help subsidize or cover a proportion of what the families would have to pay for. Is that right? And then like the, the business would uncover the other so that effectively the families aren't having to come out of pocket for this care, if I understand correctly?
That's what we're, that's the intent. That's what we're working towards. Our, this next project, if we're able to do it, our family will pay for all the remodeling, any, any, all the things that need to be done to prepare the facility for this daycare.
That makes sense. Do you know if the, the state funds that would help subsidize part of that cost, would those also be made, those subsidies also be made available to broader Newburgh residents that aren't necessarily explicitly part of the DCI family?
Yes, we're going to take a small portion. We haven't, out of the 60, we won't, I think, I, in my mind, it's ours is about 10 or 15 families. We want to be sure that we leave enough for everyone else. And we want to help the entire community.
Good. All right. Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Well, great. Not seeing any other comments. You know, again, as Stephanie said, it's disappointing on 115,000, but we'll just wait and see what the next steps are on that. So thank you for your, for Tim and John and Karina. Thank you very much for your time this evening. All right, for the rest of us, we will be moving into the business session. Shaw, I just see that Shawn Andres from the Cultural Center just got on. Shawn, if you could give us until about 7:10, we will be back. All right. Thank you. And we'll be back at 7:10 for the business, or the business session. Thank you. All right. So here we go. We are, now we're at the City Council Business Session for March 1st, 2021. A call to order, this is now called to order. A roll call, please, Sue.
And just a reminder for folks, I know it seems silly because we're on Zoom, but I have had people ask me to have you identify yourselves when we do the roll call because maybe they can only hear the audio and not see the video so well. So Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Cofield?
What up? Here.
Counselor Yannell Holloman? Counselor Martinez Plancarte?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Present.
Counselor Bacon?
Here.
Counselor Finley?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. A couple of things that reminds me, actually now that Sue says that, you know, there are people that may potentially only be listening. So a couple of things, when you speak, please identify yourself for the, for the record so that we know who it is. I, you know, I generally identify you, but it'd be nice if they hear from your own mouth. The other thing is if you have, if you have a follow-on question, in the interest of letting everyone have a chance, please ask for a follow-on beforehand and I could acknowledge you. And that way, if others are waiting, I'll make sure that I get everybody involved. So that bit of housekeeping and then further, I apologize for whoever is listening. We ran a little late with the work session tonight. But without further ado, a presentation for a Newburgh Cultural District Annual Report. Mr. Shawn Andres, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counselors, for having me here. Hi. I see that y'all got the report here, so that's good news. I will keep it brief because, well, it's been brief at the cultural district since last March. Cultural district, to remind you, is an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Newburgh, the Shalem Park Recreation District, along with its partners, the Shalem Cultural Center, the Newburgh Public Library, and then our friends in the surrounding neighborhood. So the cultural district was designed as a way for the various stakeholders that exist around the cultural district to communicate and help work together to make the place a nice place to work and live. The cultural district largely exists to govern the spaces between the library and the Shalem Cultural Center. So, you know, mostly we govern kind of public activity that happened right there in front of the buildings there. So this year, of course, there wasn't a lot of that. We did, you know, when we all decided to close up in March, we've been pretty quiet since then. We had a kind of emergency meeting in April, I think it was last year, where we kind of talked about what was going to be happening or not in the cultural district. It seemed like we were all pretty much on the same page moving forward that we should keep things pretty light and be observing all of the best practices as they come down from our, from our governor and from the CDC. So there hasn't been a lot of developments in the cultural district this year. Tunes on Tuesday, didn't happen last summer. Camellia Festival didn't happen in person. Summer reading program at the library didn't happen in person. Lavender Festival didn't happen last year, nor did the Oktoberfest or the Christmas tree lighting. At current, we don't have any big events planned upcoming in the cultural district. I do know that the Camellia Festival is going to have its run walk and there will be a bloom show inside the cultural center, but we're looking pretty hard to keep everything pretty small. And they're going to, we're pretty hard to space out the start times of the run walk so that people will be kind of coming in and sets, so it won't be big crowds at any one time. And then we are planning to have some sort of lavender festival come July. You know, in retrospect, if we had known everything we know now and we had had our understanding of the kind of outdoor guidelines and if folks like the Newburgh Downtown Coalition, who did so much work putting together the farmers markets, we'd have the benefit of that knowledge. And we probably could have had some sort of lavender festival last year. We're pretty confident that we can make it work for ourselves this year. But I haven't heard yet whether Tunes is deciding to make a comeback this summer or not, or what that might look like. We probably wouldn't be hearing from Tunes this time in the year either way. And we might just start hearing from them around March. So I'll, I'll keep you all in the loop when I know what I know. But one thing that happened last summer that I think the cultural district is really proud of and we should all be really proud of here in Newburgh is, I guess it was in June, I want to say. And the kind of aftermath of the public outcry following the deaths of Ma Arbery and George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. People in Newburgh wanted to come out and have their voices heard and they wanted to get together in some sort of way. And they wanted to have community. So the cultural district kind of rallied to support that effort. And we learned that there was going to be a gathering on the four ports. So the library and the cultural center and Shalem Parks and Rec Department Shalem Parks and Rec Department, we all kind of helped coordinate with the Newburgh, uh, city police, um, to make sure that, you know, everything was going to be, um, as controlled as it could be, that people were going to have distancing, that there'd be messages about masking, that there'd be enough um, microphone and amplification so that people wouldn't have to gather too close to hear what was going on. And um, I think all in all, there was probably about a thousand people who came out that day before, um, heading off for a walk around town. And, um, yeah, we were just really pleased how well that went, how uh, well-integrated the police presence was, how they kept off the sides and how there was really, um, no cause for concern. It was a really wonderful, beautiful community moment that I think everyone who came walked away feeling great about. So, uh, like I said, it's been pretty light in the cultural district this year. Um, and it will be kind of until further notice, but, um, yeah, if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Now, before, uh, before we do that, actually, Sean, if you might, uh, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. My apologies. Now, questions or comments for Sean, please? And I cannot see hands at the moment. So there we go. All right, Mike.
So what's the, uh, what's the timeframe maybe to start working on the auditorium or the, the complete second level upstairs?
Wonderful question. Uh, it is, uh, we are hoping to be opening that up sometime in summer of twenty twenty three. So, uh, that's a cultural center project, not a cultural district project, but I'm happy to talk as long as anyone listen about it. But, uh, that, that timeline kind of, uh, assumes some things will fall into place in the time we want them to, which, you know, when you're dealing with uh, the legislator in Salem, you never can count until long after it's happened. So, um, but right now we're really gunning for a, uh, twenty twenty three.
All right. Other questions or comments? Uh, okay. Not, thank you to council president Finley for serving on the, uh, the cultural district board. So thank you for that as well. And Sean, thank you for all of your good works, right? Hopefully, hopefully we're going to see you in person at all these wonderful events come the summer and on. So, thank you.
Check out the exhibits. We are open Tuesday through Saturday noon to six. Um, you'll probably be the only one there when you come, so it'll be pretty, uh, pretty safe, I'd say.
All right. Cool. Fingers crossed for our tunes on Tuesdays as well. So, thank you. All right. Um, moving right along, we're into item four B, the budget development update, and I believe this is, uh, Assistant City Manager Warner and Rob Moody.
Uh, actually, I'm gonna probably take a little bit of executive privilege and, uh, and lead that. So, uh, for those listening and not viewing, it's, uh, Dan Weinheimer, City Manager, um, and I'm gonna be ably, uh, assisted. But I just wanted to try to provide a little bit of context for where we are, um, you know, with the budget committee, what we're uh, planning. And then, uh, really the intent, uh, was to try to get some feedback, uh, from councillors as we sort of move into the budget. We're full throttle into budget development and, uh, as the names that we just mentioned are not, uh, Matt Zook or Caleb Lippard. You know that we are, uh, experiencing maybe some growing pains as we try to figure out, uh, all the, the things, you know, if you've gone through and, and done, uh, budgeting, um, in a complex budget environment, it's always helpful to know what they did last year and the year before and all those things, and we're figuring it out as we go. But, uh, so far, as far as the, the budget development, uh, we've asked departments to submit, uh, status quo, uh, budgets. So, uh, predicting, uh, that we are going to be in COVID for at least a significant portion of the next fiscal year. Um, we're obviously like everyone else, just guessing as far as how long that will last, but assuming, uh, probably at least the first six months of the year at a minimum. Um, and also unclear as to what might reopen and when. So trying to limit what we are, uh, projecting. So the status quo, uh, was the request from departments. They've submitted those. We asked for ad packages for anything above and beyond, anything new, anything that might address a council goal, uh, things of that nature. And so have, uh, handful of those, I would say maybe in the fifteen to twenty range of, uh, ad packages that we'll, we'll look at and try to rank and, and include. Um, and so at this point, we've completed our initial meetings with the departments. Uh, they went well, uh, but of course, what do we know? No, just kidding. Um, we're, we're still trying to figure out, uh, what we're going to do next as far as, uh, prioritizing some of the ad packages and, um, what we've come up with is a rubric of, uh, measurement so that we'll be able to rank them, uh, trying to make it as fair and objective as possible. So, uh, we're including things like city council goal, uh, connection or connectivity, um, you know, is it a mandate? Uh, is it funded elsewhere? Uh, efficiencies, cost savings, uh, limiting of legal risks, uh, things of that nature. Looking to limit the impact on our internal services, for instance, um, and, uh, general, um, cost avoidance for the future. And so, um, we're going to review all of those things, all of the budget as it exists now and, uh, move forward with budget document, uh, preparation. The budget committee, um, as I'd mentioned before, uh, we will move into that phase, uh, what, April sixth will be, uh, budget committee training and orientation as promised. Uh, we'll have a little bit of a chance to kind of talk through some of the, um, you know, the acronyms and some of the other, uh, the jargon of the budget and, and really try to get a good solid footing on that, uh, to start the process. And then April twentieth, twenty seventh, twenty ninth and fourth, at this point, we're planning for four, uh, meetings. Uh, we'll see how well we do, uh, in terms of meeting the, uh, you know, make sure we have good review of the process, but also, uh, trying to not add, uh, extra meetings if possible. But, uh, backing into that, uh, approval, uh, for the first June meeting, so the June seventh approval hopefully, uh, before you all, uh, at City Council. So, um, just a couple of quick things, uh, in addition, one, you know, the priorities, uh, for me at least in terms of reviewing the budget and especially thinking about the budget in context of having newer staff, uh, that are helping to, uh, support the, the budget development. Um, and I want to call out Dan Coiler, who's our senior accountant for his help as well. Uh, so it's more or less the four of us trying to muddle through a lot of this as we go forward. And, uh, so we are looking for simplicity. We're trying to clean up, uh, and unwind some of the, the process in the past. I think there's, there's been a tendency to, um, kind of overthink or, or re, maybe create extra steps in, in things. And given where we are with our administrative staff, we're trying to, to unwind some of that and try and leave the process a little more simplistic and, and maybe elegantly simplistic in the future so that we're able to understand where the, uh, how the process works, uh, for future folks, uh, future finance staff, uh, have clarity for that, but also make sure that we have a budget that meets everyone's expectations in a way that they can all understand, not just those with CPAs. And I think really trying to plan ahead as well, uh, for the next iteration of our finance staff and, and the overall administrative services, as I mentioned, you know, trying to think about what the impacts might be for those staff of any additional work, because I think, well, as we're experiencing, you know, the benefit of Marina and company and, and Rob leading that team, we're seeing a lot of, uh, processes and, and things like that throughout the internal side of the city organization that we'd like to touch and try to improve. And that takes a lot of time and work. And, uh, so trying to make sure we have that time and, and not adding too many things into our plate to, uh, take us away from those things that need to get done. So again, I, I mentioned that I'd like to get some feedback, so I'll ask maybe a question or two, if it's all right. Really want to know from the council, uh, how you would prioritize city action and activity. Uh, so if you had the magic wand, which I think you sort of have a magic wand, you're at least half of the committee that has that wand, uh, how might you, um, prioritize, uh, some spending? And, you know, I'm thinking not specifically, you know, I want ten dollars for this, uh, but it more, you know, at a, uh, policy level, what, what would you like to see?
All right, Stephanie.
So I think one of the things I feel like we've, I've learned, um, through twenty twenty and into twenty twenty one is that something that the community really missed in these last months is community. And so for me, top of my list is the library. Um, we saw them function in a way and take care of people in a way, um, during all of this that has been so important to all of our community. Um, our, our most vulnerable populations, um, up to the people who, um, go to Pals usually to re, to buy their books. So I think for me, uh, a top priority is going to be the library because it does really when everything else fell away, people really were in demand of that kind of service. So that's a huge priority for me. And I would say, um, anything that fosters and establishes community is going to be really high on my list, um, especially community as it's changing a little bit in our COVID era. So, um, things like our committees having, um, the technology to be able to zoom in from their homes, um, people being able to sit on committees even if they don't have access to internet normally or access to computers, um, folks getting those kinds of things. Also making sure that we are putting the funds into delivering our services in Spanish, um, is a priority for me. Um, things like, um, city council meetings, commu-, uh, committee meetings, all of those things being accessible to our Spanish speaking community is really important. Um, and then anything that prioritizes our, um, relationships with the school districts um, and the other entities that are doing good work in our community. Um, we saw one of them today, the Community Wellness Collective, along with some other entities working on the, um, homeless shelter. Those are the kinds of things that I would really put at the top of my list of things and I will advocate for those, um, all the way down the list for any of those things. So, um, so put all our money there and then find some more money for everything else. Easier said than done, but that is my, that is my wish.
Sounds good.
All right. Who's next? Mike?
Yeah, I, my, um, my wish list would be for us to try and actually budget some money to help the businesses that were hurting so much in Newburgh during the shutdown. I, there's, I mean, if we don't keep the horse that we're all riding on healthy, then we all suffer from it. And so I, I that's been a real passion of mine. And if we can budget some money somehow, I don't care if we get open, you know, five months or six months down the road or, or if it's next month, um, you know, we, we still need that. This, there's still probably a lot of them behind. We're very, very close to shutting down.
Okay. Who else?
Got a hand from Jules.
Okay, yeah, I think we've got back off what Stephanie shared. I think that with COVID, we've seen a lot of discrepancies in terms of how our city still has to do a lot of engagement with the Latinx community. And I know that a lot of us are talking about going back to the new normal, but we have to acknowledge that the normal, what was the normal for us was not working for a lot of folks in our community, especially the Latinx and Spanish speaking community. So with that said, really putting money into the outreach piece, because I think it's great to have materials in Spanish, but if we're not generally putting our efforts in terms of staff to go and build those relationships with community members, then as we've seen in our websites or even folks responding to like the, uh, the, I think it was like the water bill of, uh, the information being provided in Spanish, I think we have to go above and beyond that. And it's not just the Spanish speaking thing for his Latinx, Spanish speaking communities because it really is inter, intersectional into, or when we're talking about houselessness and when we're talking about relationship building with the schools. So just to keep that in mind and really invest and put someone on our staff who's doing that outreach piece and building relationships.
All right. Uh, let's see. Who did I, who did, Elise?
Well, everything that's been shared, um, one thing that hasn't been shared that I think a lot of us are passionate about, and I think that is very supported by our police department is really, um, investing in mental health resources for our officers to be able to have support, um, when they really are, um, you know, so much of their day is supporting different community members that are houseless or dealing with mental health crises. I would like to see us invest in our officers, um, whether that is, you know, through a similar type program that the Whitebird Clinic has, different options, um, whether we contract to the county, some sort of option to bring in-house and outreach, outreach team to really support the department.
Okay.
Who else? Anybody? Well, I gotta, I gotta go. I'd like to, you know, namely the presentation today earlier from, from YCAP and from Harvest House. Uh, you'd very much like to see us, um, find a way to assist with that. Uh, but also I think the overall, and we'll see this later on this evening with the housing needs assessment. Um, you know, the Doug's, I mean, I think his list is up to fifty four items or something now. I'd like to see some resources getting to that or it's, uh, or we're, we're never going to address the problem, uh, and that, I think that housing needs assessment makes that pretty clear. So, um, the other thing just for me is, um, you know, I'd love to, as you said, Dan, I would love to look at what all the proposed add-ons are. And then, and then maybe have the council, I think you've already thought about this, Dan, uh, allowing the council to have some discretion with a certain amount of money as to where we could prioritize, whether it's library, whether it's mental health for the police department, whether it's business and, and some, some funds that could really be directed to, to those sort of things, yeah, even beyond the council goals, but something um, in that way, I would hope, because I think, you know, sometimes I, I know in the past, I think the input was hard to break into the, to the scheme of the bud process because of its nature. Uh, but if there's a way where you really call on us to say, all right, folks, you know, this is, this is above and beyond the base now, but, um, I think that would be useful, at least for me.
Okay, we can do that.
Sorry, one more thing. Um, just underscoring what Rick mentioned earlier, um, I would just really second that of some creative way to support um, temporary housing in Newburgh. So financially supporting it, there are some really rather large projects that are like, you know, confidential right now, but coming down the, down the line here that I think are going to be really, really huge for our community. And I'd really like to see the city financially contribute to that.
Yeah. Also, I don't think, uh, Denise, I, I think I saw you unmute. I, you should go first.
You're so kind.
Okay, there you go.
Mine, mine's pretty basic, just much of what everyone else said, but what I really, really hope we invest in is doing what we're supposed to do and doing it well. Um, I think, I think we've struggled with the basic, um, looking at our codes, are codes working for us? Looking at, um, just the basic of how we do business, is that working for the public? Um, when you talk about customer service, I mean, we're open, you know, nine to four or nine to five, that's not, you know, really customer ser, that's customer service for the people who can get there at, during that time. So, so really focusing on customer service, looking at what we're doing, that's not equitable ourselves and then doing what we do, are supposed to do and doing it well. Um, whether it's the library, you know, being open when people need us to be open, whether, whether it's city hall, whether it's building, you know, is, is easy for people to access. Do what we do good first and then do more. Do what we're supposed to do first well and then do more, something like that.
Just.
I give up.
Well, do more.
Yeah.
Got it. Rinse, repeat.
All right. Other, uh, other comments on that question? Bryce?
Yeah, um, so I made a list and some of it got checked off, but I'm going to mention them so that you know that it's like, it, there's emphasis. Um, at least one hundred percent spot on. There were brilliant models of, um, folks who can help support the police department as they're engaging in a multitude of different issues. One hundred percent support that. Um, maybe two hundred percent support that. Yeah, the presentation about houselessness, I wasn't joking when I said like, I think we have the capacity and if not, should develop the capacity uh, to be able to house every person in Newburgh who needs a house or some sort of temporary housing. We can choose to do that. We absolutely can choose to do that. Um, I'm looking here at Doug. This, this man does so much work, Doug. I, so I wrote down Doug's forty eight things and I think, Rick, you said it's up to like fifty one now? That's a lot. Fifty three? I'm exhausted hearing about that. I can't imagine Doug, all the things that you got going on. Um, and so, you know, if you tell me like you got it, I'm gonna believe you. Um, and so, you know, if you tell me like, you got it, I'm gonna believe you. And if you're to tell me like, you need help, I'm gonna believe you. And so being able to help support all that 51 and plus things that will continue to arise, I am for particularly around affordable housing. Um, absolutely. The, uh, last two things we mentioned, yeah, daycares. I mean, that, to me, this is an equity issue, right? I mean, we, we've heard about the, the, what is it? The, oh, wait, not the oasis, the desert. Um, for Project Oasis, being able to address that, I don't know how, I don't know enough, but there are brilliant people, um, who I think could probably use resources to help us figure that out. And then the last thing is all about paying the people and feeding the people. You've heard me say before, so much of our work relies on folks volunteering and it's good. The volunteer nature is strong here in Newburgh. I love that. Rick, you've pointed that out multiple times. Yes, yes, yes. And we need to pay the people and feed the people. If we continue to only rely on folks who have the privilege of time and resources, um, to volunteer, then we will continue to miss out on a population that doesn't have the privilege of time and resource of, to, to volunteer in that way. So I think we can think creatively about how we help honor the time and sacrifice that folks are doing for the city. So if we can't pay the people, we can feed the people. And maybe we partner with these restaurants that are like sending out free food to shelters. So it becomes this beautiful reciprocal system where we're literally feeding people in Newburgh, like. I, I, I love that. I love that we can think about feeding people because food's good and good community happens over food. So. I'll end with that. Hashtag feed the people.
All right, uh, question number one, Dan. I think we got that one. You have another one?
I have another one, and actually I'm going to oppose it, but I'm going to say, why don't we talk about it at the end of the agenda? Because it is a question about committee work, and I know we're going to talk about committee work later, but I would love to know if there are committees that the council is interested in. And again, plant that seed for later, because I have a feeling that, uh, those committees may involve a combination of staff time, uh, city resources, and, uh, probably spin out a few work efforts that, uh, might need to be budgeted for. And so, um, you know, maybe there's a food committee, uh, the Feed, Feed the People Committee, I see it. Okay. Um, so, um, anyway, I'll, like I said, I'll pose that question now and, and maybe we save that for later.
Right. Uh, so with that, I, I think we're segueing right to you, Dan, with the City Manager's report. There we go.
There you go. I'll just, uh, move a piece of paper. Um, so Dan Weinheimer, City Manager. Um, and I actually was looking back at my notes on this, uh, you know, the file for the, the time that I've done these reports and noted that, um, it has been a year, but it also has been a year of COVID. Um, that really right around, of course, as we all know, this time. Um, you know, we started to talk about, hey, there's some cases of this disease happening in and around our, our area. And it just struck me that, um, you know, we're now talking about hopefully, uh, the city partnering on vaccination clinics and that, you know, community members are being vaccinated, hopefully all those things, and, and that we're maybe coming out of this, but it's been a year. Um, so in any event, uh, I also wanted to note that, uh, the county moved from the extreme risk to high risk, uh, end of last week. And that, you know, as you might imagine, you know, with that change, some things reopened. Um, some businesses, restaurants, et cetera, um, that were able to have some folks in, in their facilities. I think that our limitation is 25% generally for, uh, coming into city facilities. And, and I think just wanted to, to share the conversation we had with, uh, department heads after that. Uh, change was posed and wanted to understand, should we open, uh, should we, I mean, stay the course? And, you know, just share that we, we plan to stay the course, actually. Um, we don't have in the library, for instance, we don't have enough staff to really be able to do both the curbside and uh, open full-time, you know, uh, full-service, as it were. And so, uh, even for 25%, um, you know, as much as the library staff would love to have people come in and, and serve patrons, uh, mask to mask. Um, I think the decision is wise that they, uh, want to hold off and really focus on the curbside, which has been super successful. Um, make sure that they're, they're serving, uh, community members. And I think it is admirable. I think as Counselor Finley pointed out, that they have been a backbone for us throughout COVID and really rolled with the punches and, and stood up to all kinds of different programs as we went throughout the year. And so, uh, for now, at least, we're gonna hold, uh, hold with the, the closed library with curbside service. And municipal court was the other question. Uh, we've been, uh, doing a, a change of dispatch consoles and, and, uh, a revamp of the, those, uh, that office, as it were, um, that, that, um, is ongoing. It's essentially through March 19th that will be, uh, displaced dispatch. And so they're in the training room in the Public Safety Building. Um, it's a lovely office for them. There are a couple of consoles and then this giant room. And they're all kind of finding all kinds of reasons and, and ways to move and configure the room. But, um, until we're able to actually get the dispatch center relocated back to their normal facility and what will be a, a much more COVID safe arrangement, uh, we don't have the opportunity to, to reopen court. So, uh, soonest it would be, would be probably middle, uh, end of March, but we have been doing, uh, phone court. And so that's, uh, been working apparently mostly well. Um, and, uh, folks have been able to telephonically have their court dates. Um, I mentioned the budget and so I won't beat that dead horse, uh, since I was able to preempt myself on that. Um, but I do want to recognize the work, uh, from Rob and his team at Marina. Um, you know, we asked them to do a few things for us, um, you know, to manage the budget process, to help us with our general operations of the finance department and to do an assessment of our finance function. And, uh, so far I've been very pleased with the work that they've done and, and they've been, uh, very spot on and, you know, providing timely advice. And I appreciate Rob, the, you know, he's willing to, to say it as it is and not, you know, we can talk about how to fix it, but, uh, he will call out areas where there are opportunities and, uh, I, it's been really helpful. And also when I recognize Kesia, since she's visible to us right now, just say thank you for the work that she's doing because it's been your men, your men's work, your woman's work of just, uh, carrying a huge load of a lot of the internal and administrative services. And trying to figure out the budget in the, the same breath is, it's just been a lot. And so, recognize that and appreciate. Uh, and I mentioned Dan Coiler before as well, just, um, you know, he's, he's definitely stepped up in, in finance and really tried to, uh, fill a lot of, uh, you know, a, a large vacancy, right? We've got two, um, senior level staff positions that are empty. And so, uh, appreciate the three of them very much. Just a quick update on the police chief, uh, process. Uh, I know there's been a fair amount of community interest in that, and we're in the process of, uh, getting the, what will be a website, a webpage stood up. It's taken a little bit of extra time, unfortunately, but we have a survey ready to go that we're going to publish on that site for all community members. We've got it in English and in Spanish. Um, so we will post that, I hope, tomorrow. Um, also, uh, calendar, essentially a rough calendar of, of dates, uh, for the timeline of, of moving that process forward. And so far, uh, I did exchange some emails and I'm going to have a phone call with Heather Gans, who's our recruiter, uh, had good feedback, it sounds like, from her, uh, in her conversations with various community members. She's also spoken to folks in Dundee as well. And I've had the opportunity, uh, to meet with a lot of the police rank and file staff over the last two weeks. Um, I've gone over and had what I call office hours at BD. And, uh, essentially an opportunity in the morning and the evenings on Mondays and Thursdays, just to, to chat with staff and really hear both about the search, you know, what they'd like to see in a police chief, but also, you know, here are the good things that they're working on and really hear some of their concerns and questions about the direction of the city as well. And it's been really, really good, and I hope to continue to do that in the future, uh, probably give it a few months, but come back soon, I hope, if I'm invited. Um, and so that process ultimately is moving forward. It's, it's, you know, a little bit slower than I wanted, but, uh, you know, we're still moving forward on the police chief process. Um, also wanted to share with the council, not quite ready to share the detail behind it, but we have been working as a department head group on, uh, a set of values, you know, essentially value statements. And I'm excited, uh, I think we're, we're there and have a good set of values that we're going to be able to share. Uh, plan on talking to them, uh, to the department heads tomorrow about them, finalizing them. And then at that point, I'll be happy to, to share with the council and the staff. Um, but I think it's really important to connect the work, uh, that we're doing with a set of, a mission, you know, vision of where we want to go, and then a real strong set of core values that, um, include the, the council's goals that were part of the, you know, essentially what I arrived here to. Um, you know, the, that are internally facing as, as well as, uh, some, you know, values that, um, staff has come up with. And I think are really going to be, uh, good, uh, grounding for where we, how we hire, who we, uh, want next to us in those, um, those roles and how we move the, the work of the city forward. Um, last thing I wanted to do, I think when we had met last, we hadn't quite finalized it, and I believe, um, we put it out the next day or so, the state of the city. Uh, I just wanted to give kudos to Lacy DiGraff, who did an amazing job of putting that together. And, you know, it's, it's wonky because it's COVID and, you know, we're all on Zoom, but, you know, I give her a huge amount of, uh, kudos and credit for, you know, scripting us, uh, executing that and, and really getting, getting a, a really first-rate product out. And she did a great job with that. So, you know, want to say thank you to her. And, um, I understand the mayor is going to have a, a follow-up performance tomorrow on that as well. So I look forward to hearing that. Um, but, uh, that's it for me. And just want to say, uh, thank you for the support on the budget. Um, your comments are really super helpful.
Denise, did you have a comment or just a lingering hand? Lingering. All right. Anyone else? Comments or questions for, for Dan? All right, seeing none, Dan, thank you. Oh, Bryce, there you go.
No, I do. Uh, three things. One around the, the library. Um, I believe the last presentation talked about, um, uh, services that library offers to the public, whether it's access to like a computer, um, printing for some. I'm wondering if it's possible. I agree. I think it's wise to focus energy towards the drop-off. But for those who maybe really need access to some of these services, I wonder if it would be possible to provide some sort of access, even if it's limited for, for the services given, you know, for some, the necessity of it is one question.
I think they're providing essentially like similar, like you can drop off things that you need, uh, for taxes and things like that, if I recall, uh, seeing that. But I can confirm that with Will before I commit him to something that he may not be willing or ready to do. Well, I'll follow up with Will.
Yeah, and you know, maybe also ask Will what he sees as other essential services, um, particularly that give access to committees that need access, whether it's computer, internet, things like that, um, because that could be helpful. The second question, so I know a number of us on council and Rick, as well as the mayor, um, have been getting a lot of emails about the, the process for the police chief. So I wonder if you could maybe speak for those that are listening or watching. What, in your opinion, as the, the city manager, the importance is of running a process, um, that we're going through, given, you know, that it does require city funds to do so, because I know that's been a recurring question.
Sure. Yeah, no, I'm happy to do that. I, you know, I, uh, you know, it's interesting, you know, that's, of course, the, the primary question in the police department as well. Um, and what I've told them, I'll, I'll tell you all, and, and I think it's, it's consistent for any audience, is really, you know, what I, what I think I was handed a year ago, uh, was in essence, the, you know, mandate for a level of change, especially when it comes to internal operations and, and, you know, the internal culture. Um, you know, one of those pieces to me of culture and, and, you know, of a good, well-run organization, city or otherwise, is trust. And so to me, um, this is a trust-building exercise, you know, because I think it's important to be inclusive of all community members and to, you know, essentially, you know, have a, a process that is clear, I hope, you know, and working on getting that website up so that folks can see the thing. But ultimately, I think be inclusive of, of folks' perspectives, uh, gather a lot of input, uh, and really try to inform, you know, what is a, a very visible position for the, for the community. And obviously for the city, um, inform that as best we can with, with those, that level of input, you know, getting a lot of folks involved. Um, it's also an opportunity in trust-building, you know, to be authentic about, you know, it's not just my perception. I'm, I'm new here and I certainly, I, you know, recognize, you know, I, I've tried to live the value of humility and I recognize my limitations when it comes to a lot of things, but in particular, you know, want to make sure that I reflect, uh, in hiring folks, what's, what I, is best for the community. And again, because this is such a public position, I think it's critical that we have that trust-building of, you know, asking folks for their input and then, you know, trying to, as best we can to act on that. And, you know, it comes back in my, is my, uh, experience, I think any hiring process, it comes back to what are we trying to, um, to achieve and, and, you know, what do we, what do we want to see in that department? And, you know, trying to make sure that you get the, the right attributes for not just the individual and their leadership and all of the things. Because I think that honestly, I think the department is functioning well. It's just then a question of how do we augment that or, or build on it, or, you know, what are, what are you looking for? And so, again, I just think, eh, you know, the input piece of it is so critical that had we had the ability internally to do this, we would have done it internally, but, you know, with the changes in the city, we just didn't. And so this is the, uh, you know, it does cost some money, but it is, I think it's a, a trust-building exercise that, um, I'm hopeful will result in, in the best person for Newburgh and for the, the police department to step forward and, and take that role part, full-time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for your response. And the, the last thing quickly, um, you know, I'm, I'm struck by, you know, you're acknowledging Kesia and the work that Kesia's done. Lacy, we're reminded of, you know, Denise's legacy in work with the shelter. And as we're in March, um, you know, I'm thinking about February, we had a proclamation around Black History Month, September around Hispanic Heritage Month, being in March and it being Women's History Month. Um, I've been interested in seeing what it looked like to recognize the work of a lot of women, uh, locally, you know, statewide, nationally as well, uh, to recommend, yeah, to recognize just the legacy and the significance of the work and contributing to our city and community. So that would be my, my last thing. Thank you, by the way, Kesia and Denise and all the women, uh, who are doing great work for the city.
Right, and maybe we bring that up, uh, yes, we might, may have missed it today for the proclamation, but maybe that's something we can bring up, uh, for the next meeting. But certainly, um, all right, anything else for the city manager? All right, uh, I think now we're on to the time for public comments. These are general public comments about items that not, do not necessarily appear on the agenda. And I think we've got someone signed up, Sue.
Um, Kanichi emailed and said that she thought this meeting started at six and she has a conflict. So she wanted to know about registering for next meeting on March 15th.
Okay.
So she'll join us next time.
Oh, great. Okay, we will wait to hear that. All right, uh, moving on then to the consent calendar, folks. The only item is Resolution 2021 3725, extension of local emergency for COVID.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent calendar.
All right, do we have a second?
This is Denise. Sorry.
Uh, I think, I think that's Jules. Jules, with a second. All right. Seeing as it's consent calendar, all in favor signify by raising your left hands. All right, looks like unanimous, Sue. All right, thank you all. Moving right along, public hearing. This is item 8A on the agenda, ordinance 2021 2871, an ordinance admitting the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan. All right, and I will, I'm not going to guess who this is, actually. I'm going to allow them to identify themselves this time. I'll guess, I'll guess Mr. Rux, I just had.
I was trying to get my mic on, Mayor. Doug Rux, Community Development Director. Um, so I'd like to begin by entering the entire staff report, the exhibits and the attachments into the public record. So here this evening to give you a presentation on the update to our transportation system plan, uh, sp- more specifically to address the Riverfront Master Plan. So this is a continuation of the activities that we started back in 2016 with the Riverfront Master Plan. Uh, back in November, you adopted the land use regulation portion, and now we're into the, what we call the functional plan, modifications to advance the Riverfront Master Plan. I'm going to try to, uh, capsulate, uh, 400 plus pages into less than 20 slides. Uh, so I will distill this down to the relevant and important information. So why do we do a TSP? Why do we have a TSP? Um, well, it's to address issues about multimodal transportation, so driving, walking, biking. Uh, we're required to take all of those into consideration. Um, as we've talked about many times, the community is continuing to grow. Uh, it's projected, Portland State University came out with new population forecast back in June of 2020. Uh, and Newburgh will grow in 50 years to be just around, projected around 50,000 people. So we need to have infrastructure plans in place to address that. We also have business growth side uh, that will continue to occur with the new rooftops that are coming in. We also have business growth side that will continue to occur with the new rooftops that are coming into town. Transportation system plans are used for all of our land use actions. And so every time we're doing a current land use case for some new development, we go back to our TSP and then there are elements of the TSP that are in our development code. And another big one is, you know, we're not the only provider of roads within the city of Newburgh. ODOT, we have a number of state highways, 99, 18, 219, 240. And we also have some county roads that are within the city. So there's this big coordination effort, which also could lead to funding in the future in certain situations. Next slide, please, Sue. And the next one. Okay. So why are we doing this? I mentioned that beginning Riverfront Master Plan. In that master plan, we have a whole issue about sidewalks, bike lanes, trails, new roadways and so forth. We need to integrate those into our TSP for those that are collector's streets and above for roadways. But we do include sidewalks and the trails and other capacities. And then we have to identify with the funding or what the cost of those projects are going to be. Excellent. So this is the Riverfront Master Plan. Many of you have seen this graphic before. It's about 460 acres in size. So to the north, Ninth Street, the Willamette River on the south, basically Wynewski Road, Hess Creek over on the east side, and then Shahealem Creek on the east. Excellent. So the meat of all of the amendments, freight modifications. So we had in our TSP a freight route designation on 11th Street. And we clearly heard through the Riverfront Plan is we don't want trucks going down 11th Street. Well, 11th Street was used at the time that the mill was in operation. The mill is no longer operating and it's in the process of being redeveloped. So we deleted the freight route designation on 11th Street. On River Street from 11th South, that also had a freight route designation. And with the Riverfront Plan, we're proposing to remove that freight route. What we're are adding as a freight route is Wynewski Road. And that would be from the bridge over the bypass out to Highway 219. Wynewski from River Street to the bridge is already a freight route. We're not proposing to change that. Next slide. So this is the map of the freight route. So if you were at the bottom, you can see Highway 219 going off to the southeast. If you go to the west, that's Wynewski and it goes all the way up to River Street. You see the bypass connecting from Highway 219 over to Shahealem Creek. And so those are the changes visually. Next slide. Streets. And what are our key projects here? So the ones that are in black are already within our transportation system plan. And we're not proposing to change those. In the red is the new streets that we're proposing to add. And so that's River Street from the bypass down to Rogers Landing Road. It's an aspirational project. Then we have South College Street, and that goes from Ninth Street down to 14th. And that's an aspirational project. And then Wynewski Road. So that goes from the south side of the bridge over the bypass out to just to the east of Sandoz. And we stopped at Sandoz because ODOT would be realigning Wynewski to connect into Highway 219 in the future as part of Phase Two of the bypass. Next slide. So this is the graphic of that. It's a little hard to read, but you can see in the lower right, there's the green area. That's the Wynewski Road. And then in the middle of the map, at the southern end is River Street and then College Street going from Ninth down to 14th. Next slide. Intersection improvements. So as part of the Riverfront Plan, it was identified, we need a new traffic signal on Blaine at Hancock in Blaine and First. We have railroad crossing improvements to do at College Street and River Street. And then there's this new intersection configuration that needs to be studied at the intersection of South River, 14th Street, Rogers Landing Road, and the new road that will extend to the east that we're kind of generically calling the bluff road. All three of those are identified as aspirational projects and would be new in the TSP. Next slide. And this is the graphic. And so if you were looking towards the the left middle of it, you'll see two yellow dots with green around them. Those are the new traffic signals on Hancock and Blaine. And then you'll see the yellow dots with green around them down at the southern end of the map. And that's the two railroad crossings and then the intersection study area. Next slide. Walking. Walking. Again, the items in black are already within our TSP. The new ones would be the esplanade. And that would go from the kind of the west end of Northeast Waterfront Street and go over to the Waterline Bridge over by Water Treatment Plant. And then a future feasibility study for that trolley. And the trolley has been identified in the downtown plan, the riverfront plan, our tourism strategic plan. Next slide. And this is just the map. It's very similar to one I've already shown you, but you can see the esplanade at the bottom of that map. And that's the green area with the dots. And that would be that trail up along the top of the bluff. Next slide. And this is the bike one. Bike is very similar to the street one. So again, in black, already within our TSP. The red is South River Street. And that's from the bypass down to Rogers Landing. And then South College Street. That's again from Ninth to 14th. And both of those are identified as aspirational projects. And this is again, the map. I've already shown you this one on the transportation side. Next slide. System development charges. We are not proposing any changes to the system development charges as part of this TSP update. With the pending evaluation of the urban renewal program and the council's discussions about SDCs, we decided and chosen identified not to do anything with the SDCs at this point in time and defer that until after the urban renewal plan and council's discussion on SDCs. Next slide. Development Code Amendments. There's a companion piece to this. And so in 150505030, our street standards under subsection G, there's some modification language to subsection two, three, four, and seven. So that's travel lanes, bike lanes, park lanes and sidewalks. They're relatively minor fixes, but they needed to be done to align with the TSP. Next slide. Findings. So in your packet in that 400 plus pages is an analysis on compliance with state planning goals, which staff has determined that we are would be in compliance. We had to do an evaluation on the comprehensive plan and our goals and policies. And that analysis shows that this would be in compliance. We had to show compliance with ORS 197712, OAR 660, Division 11. And staff's findings are that we are in compliance with those. And then the final one, and it should have been A, B, C, D, but Doug can't do Ds because his name is Doug, is that we have to comply with our own municipal code for a type four legislative procedure process. Next slide. So staff's recommendation is to adopt ordinance number 2021-2871. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rux. At this point, as this is a legislative public hearing, I will ask for any declaration of conflicts of interest or abstentions, please, folks. I've lost you all. Where did you all go? Frozen.
We're here.
We're here.
I think you're the one of the problem.
You're here. Yeah. I have the problem. Sorry. Let me see. I'm back. I'm sort of seeing you. I may have to sign off and come back if you unless you can hear me now.
Yeah, we can.
You're fine now.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Sorry about that. Internet issues. All right. Conflicts of interest or abstentions, anyone? All right. Seeing none. We will move on. Did we have any public testimony for this item, Sue?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public testimony for ordinance 2021-2871.
All right. Public testimony is therefore closed. And the recommendation from staff?
So again, it would be to adopt ordinance 2021-2871. And I should note Brett Music, our senior engineer, is on board this evening as well. And he's done a yeoman's job in Killeson Associates. Matt Bell, one of our consultants, is also available. So if you do have any questions, they have technical answers.
All right. All right, folks. So you you heard it. Any any questions for staff? Any further deliberations?
So, Rook, hopefully it's real, real quick question. It looks like the street capital projects is around 70,000. And then the addenda, the addition of the Riverfront Master Plan, uh, gosh, is an increase of 11.5 million. I'm assuming like that's not going to put us in a huge hole in like the budget for.
Yeah. And so that's where it gets back to the slide I showed on the SDCs. And so we've identified what the additional cost would be by doing these particular amendments. And so we know what the project costs are. The actual funding to do those has not been determined yet. That's why they're listed as aspirational within the transportation system plan. And so as we go through the SDC discussion and the urban renewal plan and report evaluation, then we'll have some clarity about where the funds come to do these particular projects.
And to clarify, SDC funds are going to be what's used to to fund these aspirational projects. Is that right?
It could be some. It could be none. It could be some or could be all. Again, it it depends. If if we were not doing the urban renewal plan, then I think my answer would be it would be disproportionately SDC funds. Now, if they're in the aspirational category, that means we have not identified the funding for those over the course of the next 20 years. So as the plan is put together, there's likely funded, which we believe by collecting SDCs, we can do those projects aspirational or outside of that funding mechanism. And we'd have to find funding sometime in the future.
I see. All right. Thank you.
All right. Other comments or questions for Doug? All right. The one that I have centers on River Street. It it's shown is is it is River Street currently designated a major collector?
Yeah, I knew you would ask a question like that. And, you know, I didn't do that. Brett, do you remember what it is? Is it a major collector or a minor?
River Street is a major collector in the current TSP.
Okay. And the follow on question to that is, in order to bring it up to standard for a major collector in the city of Newburgh, what is that going to take in terms of where, you know, the width of the road at present versus what it will need to be? Is what I'm trying to get at, I guess.
The, go ahead, Brett.
Oh, I was gonna say, within the package is some drawings that show kind of those canarics and some exhibits. And so what we've identified is the right of way exists for much of River Street, if not all of it. The the issue is widening of the roadway itself. The major collector has the bike lanes added to that. So for most of the River Street, it needs to be widened to accommodate the the bike lanes. Sidewalks will be probably need to be adjusted and brought up to standards, that type of thing. So.
Thank you. I just I walk that fairly often. The dog likes that route. There's a lot of big trees as well. Just just saying, getting it out there right away. So.
And we're.
All about the trees, actually.
This is Doug again. We're fully aware of the trees. And that will be an issue for discussion with community members along that roadway. But I think the other thing to keep in mind is that with redevelopment in the Riverfront area, we have basically three primary access routes. Blaine Street, and there would be the extension of Blaine Street, which I noted earlier. Then there's River Street and there's Wynewski. And when we did the Riverfront Plan, we had to go through a transportation planning rule analysis. And it showed that we had improvements to do to those roadways. And that's why the traffic signals on Hancock in First Street, in order to address additional new housing, both single family, multifamily, industry redevelopment, and the commercial development occurring.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Any other questions or deliberation, folks? All right. Do we need a a roll call vote here, Sue? And is this by title only?
You need to decide if you want to waive the second.
Second reading.
Or if you want to hold it over for a second meeting for the second reading.
Okay. I'll take a motion if someone would be interested in doing so. Denise?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Bryce with a second. All right. Any further discussion on waiving the second reading? All in favor, raise signify by raising your left hands. All right. Looks like unanimous, Sue. And the waving of the second reading passes or passes. Yes. All right. Now, how's about a a motion for the item itself? By by title only, preferably.
Mr. Mayor.
Stephanie.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2021-2871, read by title only.
And we have a second.
Second.
Anything else? Do we? Thank you, Bryce.
Bryce, Bryce on the second. Okay.
Well, I thought I heard Mike second. I mean, I'll second it. I I just thought I heard another voice. I was just.
It was it was Stephanie and Mike.
I did second it, but.
Yeah.
Stephanie and Mike.
Yeah, I was just affirming. Good work.
All right. All right. Do we need, James, do we need any other announcement aside from reading by title only?
No, that was sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we will we'll take a motion then, right? To we've got the motion. We've got the second. All right. All in favor signify.
Look, wait a second, Mayor. We have we have to read the title. And I can do that, James, if you would like me to.
James, traditionally, this is the city attorney.
Yeah, I should have been clear about that. I said other than read by title, I thought that that meant he was actually going to, yeah, read the title. Yeah.
The honor of reading the title falls to the city attorney.
Oh, I oh, that's how it's typically done in Newburgh. Okay.
Correct. So we're ready for you.
Okay, let me. That's good to.
And if you don't have it there, I think one of us has got it here.
I have it. You know what? I've got.
It's also on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I've got. Let's see. Here we go. Of course, my computer is operating, taking its sweet time here.
It's all good.
I just read. Yeah. So up for the council's approval is ordinance number 2021-2871, an ordinance amending the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan, seven, 2016 Transportation System Plan and Newburgh Municipal Code, Section 15 dot 505 dot 030, street standards.
Mr. Mayor, are you ready for the roll call vote? It appears to be frozen again.
Yeah, let me be. We're freezing up here.
Okay, I'll I'll go ahead and start. Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Coffield?
Yes.
Counselor Yornell Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plancarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
Mayor, the ordinance passes 7-0.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. How you all feel? It's 8:15. You want to take a five minute break or you want to push on? No need for a motion, just a yea or nay. No? All right. I'm not seeing anybody urgently needing a break. So let's move on to new business. And I'm sorry for the technical difficulties here. Anyway, we've got Resolution 2021-3718, a resolution accepting the 2021 Newburgh Housing Needs Analysis and 2021 Newburgh Housing Strategy Reports.
So thank you, Mayor. Sue will pull up PowerPoint momentarily. All right. So as this is Doug Rux, Community Development Director, so as the mayor indicated, this is the Newburgh Housing Needs Analysis and the Newburgh Housing Strategy. Next slide. Again, I'm going to take hundreds of pages and try to distill it down into 20 slides. So this is a map of our buildable lands inventory. So this is our unconstrained. And so as you can see, up to the north, we have the green area, which is predominantly the Springbrook properties. You can see some brown areas around the edge. You can see some brown areas around the edges off the Chehalum, up behind the Allison Inn. Uh, we have some different shaded green areas that are part of Springbrook over off of Crestview Drive. And then you see some different medium density, which is the orange areas kind of scattered around the community as well. And then you get down in the riverfront and our color coding system. Uh, those are more of a reddish or to a brown color for the medium density and the high density. So this map identifies where we have unconstrained vacant or partially vacant land that can accommodate housing in the future. Next slide. Um, this slide breaks down the acreage for our plan designation. So we've got a total of six hundred and thirty one buildable acres. And that's broken into two hundred and fifty four acres on vacant buildable lots. And then three hundred seventy seven acres on partially vacant lots. Uh, I put in the slide just as a comparison to the twenty nineteen HNA. In that one, we had a total of six hundred and seventy five buildable acres. And we did a cutoff of October first of this, of twenty twenty, I should say. Uh, to update the buildable lands inventory for this HNA version. Next slide, please. Um, there are some safe harbor provisions that are in the administrative rule. And so we had to go back and update different elements within the housing needs analysis. And so we've listed here. Um, you know, household size, group quarters, vacancy rates and our housing mix. Um, we also did some additional changes just to understand the changing dynamics between the data that we did in the twenty nineteen. HNA versus this twenty twenty one. And that's sales and rental and median family income, uh, because the income number has gone up since the last time we prepared. Uh, a housing needs analysis. Next slide. Uh, you heard me mention earlier in a different presentation that, uh, what drove this analysis and this update. Was a new population forecast that came out from Portland State University through the Population Research Center. So that came out on June thirtieth of twenty twenty. Why that's important is, is we were going through our economic opportunities analysis and our housing needs analysis. I wanted to ensure that we were using the same forecast. I didn't want to have one document have a forecast and one horizon and another document. Have a different forecast. Um, and then we looked at and refined our capacity allocation based upon that population forecast. And, uh, what we had available for land for vacant, partially vacant. Next slide. Uh, I mentioned earlier in a previous slide, just the group quarters, and that was a piece that came up as part of this citizens committee. Uh, that worked with staff on this, and that's all detailed out in your RCA. And what we concluded from that analysis is that future group quarters, we needed to accommodate for a hundred and fifty five people. And that's the last bullet on this slide. Next slide. Um, out of the HNA, there's a lot of data. So I know Counselor Cofield likes data, so there are dozens and dozens of pages of data in this document. But this is an interesting slide that shows kind of our comparison of our median sale prices to communities adjacent to us. Of similar size. So the top is Sherwood and in the orange and McMinnville is in the green and then Newburg's in the blue. Um, what's important, I think, is to look at on the left hand portion of this slide. And looking at our twenty eighteen median sales price versus twenty twenty. So we went up from three hundred and forty thousand dollars to four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that's quite an increase over a two year period. Next slide. Uh, I enjoy this slide because it gives you a reflection of, based on the income, what can you afford? And so if you start on the left hand side at thirty percent of median family income, which is ninety two thousand one hundred for a family of four. You can afford rent of six hundred and ninety dollars a month. And then as you move up to fifty percent, it's eleven fifty or starts to look at what you could afford for a sales price. Uh, eighty percent, you can afford rent of eighteen forty, or you could potentially afford a house between two hundred and fifty eight and two hundred and ninety five thousand. So when you get to that hundred percent of median family income. Uh, is where you start to see what a lot of housing prices and rental prices are in Newburgh. Uh, and then so we broke this down and gave you some examples of some different categories of, of workers. And what they could potentially afford. Next slide. Then the consultants took and averaged this out over the next twenty years and tried to give us an idea. It's an extrapolation. Is, you know, how many housing units would we need per these different income levels? And you can see that from the, uh, eighty percent. Fifty to eighty percent of median family down to the thirty percent. That's where our, we're predicting, determining, identifying. That our biggest need for housing in that cost range would be. And on the left hand side, it indicates that, you know, you need to have a family income of a hundred and five thousand dollars to afford that. Four hundred and thirty thousand dollar home in Newburgh if you were buying. Next slide. So again, this gets to the population forecast and so in twenty twenty one. PSU identified we'd have a population of twenty five thousand. And twenty forty one is a little over thirty three thousand, so that's a one point three nine percent average annual growth rate. Uh, so that's a thirty two percent growth over that twenty year horizon. Next slide. And looking at the housing forecast itself, uh, we had to take into consideration. Uh, ha- household size, vacancy rates and so forth. And so what we need is three thousand one hundred and sixty nine dwelling units. That's single family, multifamily, attached housing. So that's an average annually of about a hundred and fifty eight units. That's down from the twenty nineteen, which was two hundred and two. Uh, the housing mix, uh, back in twenty nineteen, HNA, uh, the committee went through and identified this shift. So sixty percent of the new housing stock over the next twenty years would be, uh, single family detached. Eight percent would be single family attached and thirty two percent would be multifamily. If you looked at the twenty nineteen HNA, you would see it would, it would identify, well, historically. Uh, it was seventy one percent single family, six percent attached, single family and twenty three percent. And so the committee in twenty nineteen toggled that and said, no, we need to have more multifamily development over the next twenty years. And more attached and less detached, single family dwellings. Next slide. Uh, we've included the analysis, uh, accessory dwelling units. That was a big topic of discussion a couple of years ago. Um, and then, uh, redevelopment opportunities. And that's mostly in the downtown area and the committee talked about that again in this update. And so that is in alignment with the downtown improvement plan. Next slide. This is just the unit allocation. Uh, so we broke this out for the different types and then to the different, uh. Uh, comp plan designations. And I won't get into the details of all of it, but about sixteen percent of the new units would be in low density, twenty percent medium, high density seventeen percent. And then we have the specific plan areas. Uh, one of Northwest is driven by a density of four point nine dwelling units per acre, but Springbrook District is driven by the number of units that are in that master plan. Which is one thousand three hundred and forty five. Next slide. Then we move to capacity. On the left hand side, you can see what the historical trends have been, four point eight. Uh, in low density, seven point six and medium and eighteen point seven. Um, I think it's important to note when you, we look at these historic trends. It also includes pre and post twenty ten. Twenty ten, the city reduced its lot sizes in, in low density and medium density. And because at that time, we were only getting about three point three dwelling units per acre. So by that particular change in itself, it's moved us up to this four point eight in our low density. The medium density allows you to do detached, single family homes and or you can do apartments. The trend has been more towards the detached, single family side. Um, but overall, this capacity, uh, this portion of the analysis came out to three thousand three hundred and eleven. Next slide. Uh, that overall dense, this slide is what's trying to get to overall density five point eight. Next slide. We also had to factor in other uses. And so there is some residential that occur, I mean, uh, employment that occurs in residential, so we had to account for that. I mentioned group quarters earlier, uh, we had to account for that. And then we also accounted for our public and semi-public land needs. Next slide. And this is kind of the culmination of all of that particular work. What it tells us is we have a deficiency of thirty one acres. I mean, we have a surplus of thirty one acres of low density residential. We have a deficiency of thirty seven acres in high density, medium density and forty four acres in high density. Relation to twenty nineteen, those numbers were twenty, twenty six and sixty two, but we did not have the public and semi-public. So the big driver of this is our population forecast is slower. We're not projected to have as many people. Uh, which drives fewer housing units, which drives a lesser land demand than what was analyzed in twenty nineteen. Committee spent a lot of time talking that through. Uh, the other component of this is the housing strategy. And so the mayor had mentioned earlier about our list of fifty three. What's in the housing strategy is pieces of that. And so, uh, supply of land, so conducting the analysis of our land need, we're in that process. We want to look at maximum lot size, minimum density requirements, cluster development, which is actually coming out of House Bill two thousand and one. Uh, density bonuses in our stream corridors is being able to transfer more of that density up to the developable portion. Uh, we identified the strategy, uh, duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes. Uh, we're in process of doing that work through HB two thousand and one. Small, uh, small and tiny homes. And so council back in November moved that up to earlier in the horizon. Vertical housing tax abatement, we're working on that. Uh, on the list is there are some other provisions in statute for property tax abatements for multifamily. We're doing the urban renewal district in process now. Council adopted the construction excise tax last November. We did a portion of this issue about reduced or waived SDCs. As part of the construction excise task, tax, and we moved back the timing when you have to pay SDCs for single family and duplexes. And then what is on the list is, and it's come up in, um, both committees, uh, back in twenty nineteen. And again, in this current committee about the possibility of a general obligation bond to support affordable housing. And that is my presentation, Mayor.
Thank you, Doug. It looks like, um, Rick, the mayor, is having some technical issues, so I'm going to take over for just a second.
Okay.
Um, although Rick is on the phone, so he is available to us when we need him. Um, so Doug, did you give us the recommendation already? I missed.
I, I had not, but I will do that. So our recommendation is to adopt resolution number twenty twenty one thirty seven eighteen.
Thank you. And Sue, do we have any public testimony?
Yes, we have, uh, Charlie Harris and Sid Friedman. So I'll go ahead and promote Charlie to panelist. Charlie, we're ready for you now. Okay.
How about now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
And, uh, oh, you can even see me, huh? Well, thank you for this opportunity. Um, I have previously submitted, uh, a couple of, uh, different, um, written testimonies. And I just wanted to emphasize that all the numbers that you just saw from Doug. Uh, have to do with the need for the next ten thou- or eight thousand people coming into Newburgh. This is what they'll need. The night, the study does not address at all what are the needs of the current residents of Newburgh. It shocked me to find that out. Um, you'd think that a housing needs analysis would deal with both the current need and the future need. But in fact, it only deals with the future need. Um, there, hello? Nope. Uh, there, uh. Pardon me. I wanted to make three, uh, points now. First of all. Uh, I set forth in my testimony, a lot of methodology about how to, uh, evaluate the current need. Um, since that time, I've read Doug's, uh, staff report. Uh, and I feel like it's not going to be worth my while or your worthwhile. Uh, to try to establish some kind of methodology to address the existing need. There will be an opportunity, I think this is only an opportunity for the council to accept the report. There's an additional opportunity in another month or two to adopt the report. And perhaps by that time, the state will have come out with a methodology to address the existing need. So, uh, we'll see how that comes out. Um, in the meantime, I do want to emphasize that the report does address the existing need to, to a certain extent. On, uh, an exhibit, uh, forty six on page fifty seven of the HNA. Uh, it discusses the thirty seven hundred households that are below, say, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, of those thirty seven hundred households, there's a deficit of twelve hundred and fifteen households without housing. That's a third of the people below fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that have been identified in the HNA as, uh, having a deficit of housing. Um, so I think that what you want to do, I guess, is, or what I'd like you to do as the city council is to, uh. Keep that existing housing shortage in mind as you address some of these other issues that are coming up, the middle, missing middle housing. Uh, the strategies that have been identified in the report. Uh, those things, I think, have to be, uh, looked at with this background in, in mind. That, uh, in addition to the housing shortage that is shown in the report regarding, uh, future needs. And the need for more multifamily housing, more affordable housing, that, uh, appears to be the case as well with the existing need. I did want to also attach, uh, touch one, uh, on one bit, and that is having to do with the parks department, or with the parks need. And the Springbrook Master Plan. Um, all during the committee hearings, the committee meetings that we had last fall. Uh, we were told that the master plan, the Springbrook Master Plan is sacrosanct. You can't deal around with the. Um, densities involved there with the numbers of single family acres or our multifamily acres. Uh, that's all off the board because it's set forth in the master plan. Um, I was surprised then to read in the staff report, uh, the sentence that city commu- The private parks would be maintained by an HOA and would not be public parks. The master plan itself says nearly fifty acres are dedicated to park uses. These parks will be privately owned but open to the general public. So if this, so if the owner's rep is now saying, well, no, it's not going to be open to the general public, it's going to be private. I take that to mean that the master plan is not so sacrosanct. And perhaps we should be relooking at the, at the densities there. You have to understand that for the six hundred and thirty some buildable acres, fully half of that is found in the Springbrook. Uh, master plan area. So it's going to drive your discussions over the next couple of years. Uh, and I would certainly hope that staff would. Uh, explain to the developer either that, uh, they can't relook at the parks thing and say, no, it's not going to be open to the general public. Or we can open up all of the master plan for discussion. Um, so hopefully that will be the council's direction to staff is to, uh, dispel them of the. Uh, thought that they can simply say, no, the parks are not going to be open to the general public anymore. Um, and then the last point I, I just want.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. It looks like your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sue, who do we have next?
Um, next we have Sid Friedman. Um, hold on just one moment. Okay. Sid, are you there?
On mute, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, I thought I was, I, I thought I had my camera on, but I don't, I'm not going to bother with it. So my name is Sid Friedman. Uh, I'm testifying for Friends of Yamal County. Um, I lived in Newburgh for nearly twenty years and served a couple. I lived in Newburgh for nearly twenty years and served a couple of terms on the Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission. I now live outside of Yamhill, but I still consider myself part of the community. And I care deeply about Newburgh's future. Everyone here recognizes that Newburgh has a problem of housing affordability. And I commend you and your staff for taking measures to address that. The housing needs analysis and the housing strategy that are before you represent meaningful steps in the right direction. Your packet contains, uh, both our December comments and our February comments. I've read the staff response in your packet to our December comments. There isn't a response to our February comments. And we fear that in some respects, the housing analysis may be missing an opportunity to go beyond the minimum of what is legally required and make bolder steps towards solutions. And I say that recognizing that the city is unlikely to do another housing needs analysis for several years, once this one is adopted. The housing needs analysis concludes that going forward, the densities at which Newburgh has historically developed will be the same as what is needed in the future. There is no, no real explanation for this conclusion, but we question it. Because historical development densities haven't provided adequate housing at price points Newburgh's households can afford, we see no reason to think it will adequately do so in the future. And this has nothing to do with the existing need identified in the regional housing needs analysis uh, that your staff talks about in its response memo. This is about what Newburgh needs going forward. It's worth noting that with respect to medium density housing, which tends to be more affordable than low density, recent development hasn't even met the target density in the city's comprehensive plan. But the HNA therefore conclude concludes without explanation that this lower than target density in medium, in the medium density zones is there for what is needed in the future. This all points to the need to both reexamine needed density going forward and to adopt really robust implementation measures. Some of which are in the housing strategy, like reduced minimum lot sizes and minimum density standards and some other strategies which actually require funding, like a general obligation bond. One of the problems facing the city in implementation is the large amount of residential land that is in the Springbrook District and subject to its master plan, which calls for significantly lower density and a much higher ratio of single family housing than what even the HNA says is needed. We urge the city to approach the property owners to see if they would consider changes to the master plan and its mix and density, its housing mix and density to better meet the city's needs. Also on the subject of the Springer Mass, Springbrook Master Plan, we know, as Charlie did, that it designates about fifty acres of parks, including active parks with play structures, spaces for community activities and other more passive uses. The master plan mandate mandates that all these parks be open to the general public. The HNA fails to account for any of this parkland in its, in its calculation of, of supply and need. We don't contend that all fifty acres of this parkland in the Springbrook District should be subtracted from the city's overall parkland need. But it is clear that these parks will meet at least some of the park need of Springbrook District residents. It is unreasonable to conclude otherwise. In our February letter, we explained why counting twenty four of this acres of this fifty acres makes sense uh, in some detail, but I won't go into that here. So that concludes my remarks. Um, once again, I acknowledge there's a lot of good work that's been done here, but I think the city can do more. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sid. Okay, council, time for, um, questions or comments for staff. Mike, go ahead.
So, um, Doug, if I'm understanding this correctly, the, the part of the parkland that's in this overall plan, I mean, I, I heard Charlie, I think, say that it was going to be private land. Cause usually the parkland is all, you know, uh, put together through the Shannon Parker Recreation District, and that's open to the public. So I, I guess I don't understand what he was referring to there. Can you help me with that?
So in Doug Rux again, so in the analysis on our public and semi-public land use, which has already been in front of the council, is that in our comprehensive plan, it has information that mirrors what's in Shaheilum Park and Recreation District master plan for parks. And so that's based upon types of parks per thousand of population. We, and in that it has neighborhood parks and it has community parks. And so we have that embedded within our comprehensive plan. So to do this analysis, we then looked at what's in our comprehensive plan and said, okay, we have this future population growth that's going to occur. And based upon that data is that we need additional parkland and it would be public parkland. So we went through that calculation. We do not have anything in our comprehensive plan in regards to private parks. So in the Springbrook Master Plan, there are, there are parks identified. And in conversation, Charlie is correct, there is language in there that says open to the public. In conversations we had with representatives of Springbrook Master Plan is that those parks are private and that they would be maintained and owned and operated by the HOAs for that development to occur in the future and that their guests could use those parks. So I don't have any methodology for private parks. Mr. Friedman brought up an issue out of administrative rule, I believe it was, and don't have it sitting in front of me. But the consultants and I talked about that, and it says, well, we don't have it, we don't have the methodology. Where's the standards to drive that by? And so that's how we came up with what additional public parkland that we need in the future to accommodate our population over the next twenty years.
Can I have a follow up, please? So, so Doug, I mean, what, what the park district has done in the past is that a lot of times on, on, um, housing developments, the developer would come in and go, how about, you know, we give you X amount of acres for a park within this area. You know, for, in exchange for some of the SDCs. I mean, so there's, I mean, there's kind of an answer to that. I mean, it's already kind of has happened along the way.
Well, and there's different types of parks. And so even if you go back to CPRD's Parks Master Plan, it describes what these different types of parks and the amenities that they have.
Right.
And so council has seen that and reviewed those, uh, basic definitions as part of the public and semi-public. So there may be portions of private parks that are in the Springbrook Master Plan that are just open space, but they're not a park. They're not a neighborhood park. They're not a community park. When you look at those attributes. You may have other situations where you may have a stream corridor, you may have a linear open space, but it's not a park. And so we had to noodle through those issues in order to do that public semi-public, and then that information fed into the housing needs analysis and feeds into the economic opportunities analysis.
Thanks, Doug. And I think I saw Mayor Rogers unmute. So Mayor Rogers, do you have comments and questions? If you do, you need to unmute.
There, how's that?
There, we got you now. Go ahead.
Alrighty, thank you. First off, I apologize folks for the, uh, technical difficulties. And Stephanie, our council president, thank you so much for taking over. Our housing needs, um, you know, I, my only comments are really going to underscore, I think, what's already been said, but I, I know in a lot of ways, I think what Charlie's alluding to, and, and so is Sid to a certain degree, is that the housing needs analysis really, it actually, it understates the problem. Um, I think when you, when you look at it from a number of different factors, um, I think there's a quote saying that thirty eight percent of all households face housing affordability problems in Newburgh. And, and I apologize if this is redundant. Another says fifty six percent of renters have affordability issues in our community. But at the same time, between tw- two thousand and five and two thousand and twenty, seventy seven percent of the housing that came into stock was single family detached. And I think that was averaging a hundred and twenty four units a year. And if I can just focus briefly, particularly on the high density residential, we have and have had a deficiency in that area for years. You know, even though we're seeing movement now that has not historically been the case. And the report mentions that Newburgh does not have a history of redeveloping anything that is zoned as single family dwellings. So this becomes more and more of an issue. If you look at the report, it projects that in two twenty twenty or to twenty forty one, we need nine hundred and fourteen units of multifamily housing to meet the projected population growth. All right, again, as was mentioned, not mentioning the current deficiency. That translates to forty five units a year for twenty years to meet that. Um, and, you know, as far as I know, we've got one forty five unit apartment complex going on now on River. But again, to reach that, we're going to have to take bigger steps than just this, which came back to the budget question. So there it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. And it looks like Denise, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, Rick basically said everything that I wanted to say because we do, I mean, as a homeowner, like that, that's awesome. My house doubled. Woo. But as someone who cares about affordable housing, that is not awesome. And I also want to give a shout out to my, my neighborhood who we heard not a peep out of when the apartment complex started being built. So I think that goes to say a lot too in, you know, when you do the not in my backyard. That creates a, a big problem because it becomes, you know, not about the commons, but about yourself. And you can't just keep putting affordable housing in one neighborhood because they accept it willingly. You know, so, because, you know, it's, it could be them, right, next needing to live in an apartment or it's their children or whatever it is. But I think we are really going to have to change minds and hearts and change our codes and really push people that this is what we need and this is what we hope to build and make, make it clear that, um, it's not just about people's personal needs, but it's for the good of the city overall. So I hope, you know, we, we move forward in, uh, really looking at um, who we want to be. And, you know, we don't want to increase the home, the need for homeless shelters when we can put people in homes.
Thank you. Are there any more comments or questions? If not, I can entertain a motion if there is one.
Madam President of the Council, we'll go with that. Uh, motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty one three seven one eight.
All right. And Elise with a second. Sue, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote because we can't see the mayor.
Okie dokie. Um, Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Um, Counselor, I already got my cheat sheet up. Counselor Cofield?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Nell Holloman?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Martinez Plancarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
Uh, seven zero, council president.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, let's see what's next on our agenda here. We are going to move on to resolution twenty twenty one dash three seven two six. And who is, is that Doug or is that Dan?
That's me.
Doug, you again, you're on.
It's the Doug Show, according to Counselor Cofield, unfortunately. No, you got to hear from others first tonight before you got to me.
I'm, I'm on the fortunate side of that, Doug.
So Doug Rux, Community Development Director. Uh, what we have in front of you is a proposal for some additional funding for our renewal, uh, planner report evaluation that we're going through. Uh, council previously had authorized using funds out of the Economic Development Fund, which is fund fourteen of a hundred thousand dollars to do the feasibility, the plan, the report, and do the public outreach. Uh, you've completed the feasibility, you, uh, accepted that, you created an urban renewal agency. We are now in the process of writing the plan and the report. Uh, it's taken a little longer than what we had anticipated. We had some additional analysis costs that we did not originally, I, uh, anticipate occurring. Uh, part of that was driven by the mill and the uncertainties of what was going to occur with that. So it took us some additional time to, to move through that. When the decision was finally made and the property was sold, uh, that gave us some additional clarity. So I've worked with the consultants about the additional, uh, expenditures that we would need to finish up the plan and the report uh, and get that to council in the fall, uh, early fall of twenty twenty one. And the amount is ten thousand dollars. Uh, to be able to pull an additional ten thousand dollars out of fund fourteen, it requires council action to do so. And so consistent with what we did previously when the council had authorized using this fund, we're back in front of you with this resolution, asking for the authority for the city manager to access that fund for that additional ten thousand dollars to finish the feasibility, uh, the plan and the report. And so staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution twenty twenty one thirty seven twenty six.
Thank you, Doug. Council, questions and comments? Going ones. I don't see you unmuting, Mayor Rogers, but if you have something to say, go ahead and unmute.
I'm good at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. If there are no questions, I can entertain a motion.
But damn, council president. President of the council, we'll go with that. Uh, I would like to move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty one dash three seven two six.
Second.
Thank you. That was Jules with the second. And I'll ask for a roll call vote again, Sue, since we can't see the mayor.
Uh, Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Cofield?
Yo.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plancarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
Uh, council president, the vote seven zero.
Thank you. All right. Looks like we're moving on to council business. Is there any council business, uh, committee reports at all? Nothing. All right, moving right along. Um, we are going to go on to ten B, which is the subcommittee discussion item for council. And let me pull that up here. Um, so it's in your packet, but we met twice, February tenth and the twenty fourth. Um, and the subcommittee would like the council to talk about a recommendation for interviewing candidates uh, for committee positions for the spring recruitment. Um, and right now it's on the calendar for June twenty first during the council work session. And this recruitment would be particularly for youth positions and the citizen rate review candidates. Denise or Rick, do you have something to add to that?
No.
Rick, do you have anything to add?
Okay, there we go. Um, now the recruitment period, the interviews, uh, the only other thing that the student commissioner um, to go forward with that, I think that's March fifteenth. And the only other thing that I had noted was ex officio duties if people, um, would like to be part of these committees uh, as a counselor. That's what I got.
Okay. So and Sue, am I right that you're going to, we're going to come back with a resolution for that next on, on the fifteenth?
Yes, um, Student Commissioner Colin Bullock, um, is going to present to you on the fifteenth. The, uh, kind of an overlay ad, speaking Doug speak now, sort of a zoning ad at the committee level. I got a smile out of him. To add youth positions. And then we'll come back later in the fall and unwind the code and do some magic. Um, so that's scheduled for-
So that's scheduled for you for the fifteenth.
Thank you. Any questions from council, the other council? And I know Dan wants to talk about committee stuff, so if there are any questions, we'll have Dan. Go ahead.
Actually, two things. One, I think in here it says that the council would interview candidates. And I know we had talked in the subcommittee as a possibility of having subcommittees of the council do that and in order to make it a little easier. So that may be something you want to consider. The other thing was my question of committees that the council saw moving forward. What we had talked about in the in the Subcommittee of Committees, we talked about the idea of, you know, trying to repurpose the way that we've done ad hoc committees to be more purpose-driven and to be committees that were, you know, more in alignment, I think, with the city council goals and priorities of the community, as it were. And so you know, just the idea of other committees. And, you know, again, I'm trying to tie this back to budget and thinking about allocation, both from staff time, but also, you know, the potential for other projects and things that this committee or these committees might work on. So I'll leave it there and see if there's any comments.
Yeah, to Dan's first point is that we talked about if we continue to have the issue that we've had, which is a lot of applicants is doing those interviews not as the council as a whole, because that could take up a lot of time, but instead designating smaller portions of the council to do those interviews. So thoughts on either one of those things that Dan brought up?
Yeah, I agree too. I think having a subcommittee would make a lot more sense. I also wonder if there might be some committees that would, that we, as a council, might want to have a little bit more proximity to, if that makes sense. And so maybe discuss it as a council, but ultimately, yeah, I would trust the subcommittee to handle a majority of committee appointments, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
I agree.
Okay. So and then Dan, to your second point, for me, I know I hate to add committees. And I say that before, I'm going to tell you that there are a couple of committees that I think would be an important addition to the city of Newburgh. One is a DEI committee. If we are going to commit to that long-term, I think, committee of community members and residents to drive the way that we do DEI in our community is important. And so I would like to see that as an addition to our committees. And the other one that I've gotten a lot of comment from community members is a police oversight committee. And I, you know, I know I've talked with you before about it, whether that's a city committee or if that's from outside, but just the consideration for something of that nature. Anyone else want to weigh in on that? All right.
I also would like to, like, have the addition to, or I guess reframing of the affordable. I know that that one has to be a certain way because of the way it was set up with the Affordable Housing group, but it would be great to include unsheltered as a part of that as well.
We did talk about that, reframing some of the way that existing committees are structured, the standing committees, to try to be a little bit broader and avoid creating ad hoc committees because of it. And so that could definitely be included. I think that was sort of step two of, you know, needing to do code changes and that sort of thing.
Thanks, Elise. Anyone else? Dan, do you have what you need? Oh, Denise, do you have something?
The only thing I was going to say, and I've done this with other organizations that I work with, the DEI should not be its own committee, but be a lens in which every other committee is kind of working through. What happens when you just bulk it and, you know, make it its own committee is it's not really, it's not really attached to the actual other work that's being done. And if you, if you change that and make it part of the lens, so when you're working on affordable housing, you'll have that lens. When you're working on planning, you'll have that lens. That way, it's not, it's not independent and it's always inclusive into all of the work that we do.
Thank you.
And Denise, I appreciate your, like, perspective on making sure that there's a lens that is integrated into each of the committees, because you're spot on, right? Equity touches everything. I wonder if this is a case where it's a both and, right? It's both embedded within each. We encourage maybe even provide professional development around the implementation of equity lens into works. And there's a committee who is specifically tasked with identifying ways in which the community can further, right, move down the road as it pertains to addressing some of the disparities that we're seeing present. I'm a fan of both, both and. All the above.
Jules?
Yeah, I definitely agree. I think with Denise and Bryce as well, especially if you're talking about DEI sometimes, race especially gets lost when it gets sprinkled on everything. So I think having that lens and focus, especially when we're talking about race and how we can do better is important. And I feel like that was a conversation sent to happen when there's a specific focus on that.
Thanks, Jules. And Mr. Mayor, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say on the equity question, and I don't know if this happened already, but I would certainly like to see some kind of a committee at the, either at the director level or someone who is the point person for equity at the city, as much as seeing on the exterior. And the other I'd like to say is that, you know, on all of these committees, if we can get, and we've talked about this before, if we can get citizen initiative like Sustainable Newburgh or Housing Newburgh or whatever it is, I am all for that because as we all know, staff's time is limited. So anyway, and plus that also proves our community buy-in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dan, do you have what you need?
Yeah, I was fine with zero. I'm fine with two or three. And I just want to make sure you have what you need. And, you know, again, I think it's reframing the way that we put these things together so that you have more direction, I guess, to us, right? These are the committees we think are important. So, yeah, I'm good. And if there's more later, I'm happy to take that as well.
Yeah, go ahead, Bryce.
If we are, which it sounds like we haven't heard any objections, you know, moving forward to some sort of DEI committee, I'm pretty sure McMinnville just went through a process of, you know, like identifying who would be on it and what it would look like. So that could be a potential resource moving forwards or not having to recreate the wheel.
Thank you. Okay, so this concludes this agenda, but I know we have an executive session, and I don't have the language for the executive session. Is there someone that can do that for me, either Mr. Mayor over the phone or Sue or James?
I had sent it to Rick, but let's, James, I believe.
But actually, in the interest of awkwardness, I probably will not go on the executive session call. It just may be more awkward. So, but here is the script to announce the start of executive session. I will now read the announcement required to hold an executive session. After the announcements, this Zoom meeting will terminate and the council will enter into a separate Zoom meeting not open to the public. The city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of deliberation with persons designated by the governing bodies to conduct a performance evaluation of a public official. Where is my? Oh, sorry, where's the reference? It's here somewhere.
It's ORS one nine two point six six zero.
One nine two six sixty-two I. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons will be allowed to attend the executive session. No decision will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, the council meeting will adjourn and will not return to open session. We will now terminate this public Zoom meeting and begin the executive session.
Thank you. And so everyone's going to log off. Do you guys want like a five-minute break before we log back in, or do you want to just keep going? I see nods for five minutes. Okay, so five minutes. We will be back at nine eleven.
And Stephanie?
Yes.
Kessia will be your staff running the Zoom meeting. James will also be present, but Dan?
Awesome. Okay. Thank you, Sue. We'll see you in a minute.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Are we going to log right back into the same Zoom address?
You have a separate Zoom address for the executive session, so you want to go into that one?
Okay.
Yeah.